Good morning. I'd like to call this work session of the Southampton Town Board to order on this 26th day of July 2018. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. You could turn your cellphone ringers off so they don't disturb our meeting. All right, so Madam Burke, would you kindly call the roll?
Supervisor Schneiderman.
Here.
Councilwoman Lovstad.
Here.
Councilwoman Scolera. Councilwoman Bouvier.
Here.
Councilwoman Scivoni.
Here.
I do believe Councilwoman Scolera is on her way, so I think she'll be joining us. So we're going to start out this morning with an annual update from our Sustainability Committee. We have a number of members present. So do you guys want to come up to the table? We have Christine Fettin, our town engineer. We have Lynn Arthur from the committee. Dieter von Liestein, which I think maybe I've got --
I think we need another chair for our planning.
Nick Palumbo. Gloria and Reike -- what's the last -- Burke. Gloria and Burke.
That's so much easier to use than it is last name.
Yeah. I'm thinking of Gordian, right? Gordian, Gloria and Reike. And Joe Glorioso. All members from the committee. So welcome. Also Kyle Collins, our land planning and development administrator.
This is for Janice, but she'll be here in a little bit.
Okay, you guys don't want to come up here?
No, we're good.
You're going to be asked.
As needed.
As needed.
All right, so I guess this is a statutory requirement that this committee, which is a fairly large committee, comes to the Town Board once a year and apprises us, updates us on the activities of the committee. Right? So that's where we are. So, Dieter, are you leading this off? All right.
Good morning, everyone on the Town Board.
Good morning.
And thank you for seeing us to give us, give you the update. As we say, better late than never, for it's just about before budget time, so that we're coming in, that you know all the monies we want. I'm joking. What I'd like to start with, just to tell you, we are approaching it in two ways. The one thing is 2017 actions, we are not going into it as a question of timing. It would take too long to tell you all what happened in 2017. You know it. You've been involved all year round in it. So we're concentrating on 2018 and the future. That's the one thing. What I'd like to tell you, too, is we have, during the course of the year, established two subcommittees. One is run by Nick Palumbo. It is transportation, bikes, railroad, et cetera. Our newest baby is our plastic subcommittee, run by Joe. He will tell you what this is all about, and that is a very active group. Unfortunately, only he could make it today. And so that is, as a starter. What I'd like you to do is, in order of saving time and not remembering everything which has been said before, once a presenter for each of the sections of what we have here, you see it thrown at the wall, ask your questions to that presenter when he's finished, and then we go to the next presenter, if that is okay with you.
Will you? Well, it's okay. It's just hard to do.
I know you have it.
I have a gavel, so.
Please.
I keep everybody alive.
Now, it so happens that the first subject is water, and it happens to be, I'm the champion for that, for this particular area. The big thing for water, as far as our involvement is concerned, was that the CPF Fund brought in 20% in the future for water. And that is a great step forward, which opened the possibilities for septic updates and septic systems. One sad news on this is that the Shinnapurk Nation has voted against a vacuum septic system, which our member Bill Shalit has been working on for years, for it would be very advantageous for the nation to have a septic collection system, vacuum system, concentrating it. But they voted against it, so they go on as they are. And it's too bad, for they're sitting so close to the water. It may be that there has to be some of the CPF money going into that direction.
I don't think we can.
What?
I don't think we can direct CPF money onto the reservation.
That's one of the issues.
Ah, okay. I didn't know that. Okay? Thank you. I'm personally still working with a manufacturer of a septic system, Aqua Beck. You may have heard the name in the past. They are finally getting on stream. All the systems, which are now agreed to by Suffolk County Department of Health, are nothing more than a slight upgrade on what we had, and the so-called newer systems, the tank, the cesspools, and then still not doing the job which could be done. So we are hoping that this company, who's getting on stream in the fourth quarter this year, will then have a system which is, imagine, a small little, looks like a little rocket, which you put into your septic system, uses the energy of a fridge, and is a distillation system. In simple words, it takes out all the nitrogen, and then once in a while you take a filter out with this, with what they filter through the distillation system, and that's it. And that takes out 99.9% of all nitrogen. So we're hoping that will work.
I'm going to let John interrupt. Violate your role to speak, just so that we're clear, that there's a whole series of things that are in place, being tested by the county health department, and ultimately they're the regulatory agency.
We know.
So for the public's edification, I just want to be clear that, you know, there's a process.
We're all familiar with that, and they know too.
But the public might not be, so when we have an opportunity to do that, let's...
Yeah. So, yeah.
There are a couple promising systems.
Yeah.
That are being looked at, that have less maintenance, less operational costs.
And hopefully cheaper to install.
Cheaper and remove far more nitrogen.
Yeah.
But that's one I'm not familiar with, and that sounds exciting, if it retrofits a current septic system.
Yeah. It should, and I, when that gentleman, the owner of the company, had his first drawings, I went with him to the Department of Health, Water Hill, and they looked and said, "If you get that thing ready, just let us know. We're going through the testing process," and we've never seen anything like it. Let's hope this is going to work, and it's going to do all what it says it does.
Well, just to add to that, Dieter, that we deal with companies that come through our offices quite often. I think by last count, almost 15 companies that I've spoken to over the time. So the main directive is to go get that proven and tested, so that it can be approved for installation. That's the critical area. So I'll also acknowledge Bridget Fleming, who we worked with really hard in the county to get this process in place. And I know they're reviewing on the commercial side articles five and 19 to allow, to streamline that process, and some of the ways that we can help in that is to do exactly what the Sustainability Committee does.
And by the way, and John's been working very closely on this, but it's why we've rolled the program out in a limited fashion, not in a larger fashion, because we realize technologies are changing, and we want to make sure, you know, we're requiring people to put in the best systems, so they don't have to undo the work that they're doing, or we lose opportunities that might be available in a short timeframe.
Yeah. That's good. So that was my part about water, and we are going now over to the green building topics.
She's not here, so maybe we should go to the next topic and come back to that.
Janice will do that. She's not here yet. And now we have energy and carbon, and I don't think Lynn needs much of introduction, for she's been sitting in your offices over the last year and brought you up to date. Lynn, all yours.
Great. Again, thanks for allowing us to summarize today. There's been a lot of activity in the energy space, as you all know. So real quick, what we are actively doing in that first set of bullets, CCA's kind of been on the back burner for a while. That will change, hopefully, in the next month. Climate Action Plan, we're, you know, working closely with Kyle's organization, Mike in particular. Benchmarking, just want to emphasize, benchmarking is really critical to everything, because we need to, you know, know where we are, figure out the gaps to where we want to be, and make sure that we have a process to measure. We've been, we have a series of educational sessions scheduled with Christine Fettin's help regarding battery storage over the course of the next month. She's also been leading the charge to get the LED lighting projects, you know, as you all know, that's well underway. There's a committee that Kyle, Mike, Janice, Christine, Frank, and myself are on, who recommend plans, which you'll be hearing more about, regarding how we get to achieve the renewable energy goal that you guys all set. And these last two, you might not have heard of that, but one of the things I'm personally doing is I'm closely monitoring and hope to soon be reporting. We're looking to have a separate work session, get on your calendar sometime in the next month, to talk about, there have been a lot of recent events, and we are left to connect the dots, because, you know, there's not a formal way in which the utility shares with us the big picture. I know Supervisor Schneiderman and Councilwoman Bouvier and maybe others have attended, like, the NYSERDA offshore wind plan. I went to both the Boham meetings with the fishermen in the last month. No problem. And there's a lot going on, and we want to, again, because this is in-the-weeds kind of discussion, and how it affects various constituency groups in our community, so we'd like to talk about that, you know, at a separate meeting. And then also the LIPA board meetings lately, there have been some changes, some new tariffs that have been announced, and there's also an update to Utility 2.0 that's come out, and they're looking for comment. So these are all topics, again, that are very technical, so let's defer them to another time, just to let you know that we're involved in that. And we are engaging, you know, with community groups, elected officials and stakeholders across the whole East End, which kind of leads to the last one. Even though we had a little bit of a challenging presentation, we really appreciate that Supervisor Schneiderman, that you got us on the agenda of the mayors and supervisors meeting. As awkward as I felt that day, it was so beneficial, because the outcome has been that the mayors are contacting me directly, inviting me in to meet with them. I presented to their trustees, and now I have programs with, you know, Christine Fettin's assistance. I'm now presenting to homeowners associations, which is fantastic.
All over the East End.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, yeah. And also in, yeah, on the North Fork, right? And Shelter Island has invited us to help them get on their feet, their solarized program.
That's great.
Good.
All right, so recommended opportunities in energy. Janice, as you might know, has been working on this utility lot concept for over a year. So we are recommending that, you know, you go full bore on that. You actually make it into something, you know, whatever it is that we need to do in order to make, get that as code. There's no question about what that involves. Okay.
Well, we'll go into detail when we get to the legislation.
Another time, okay.
The concept, the basic concept is for battery storage and things like that.
Waste water treatment, solar.
Sustainable development.
Whatever makes sense for that subdivision.
Right, to serve an area.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. We're recommending that we, that you fund an outreach and education plan to increase solar adoption on commercial properties. We really haven't done that. We've been focused predominantly on residential through the Solarized Campaign funded by NYSERDA. We're also recommending you fund a capital program to install rooftop solar on town buildings. You know, as you might know, in East Hampton, if in fact they do adopt in Waynescott and get that $8 million, chances are, I, you know, again, I'm just connecting the dots, chances are pretty good, some of that money might be used, you know, to put solar on town buildings. They're actually, you know, in the process of working with NIPA to do exactly that. So we'd like to make sure that we are, you know, following suit in whatever makes sense for Southampton. We'd like to, you know, recommend, we're recommending that we have an outreach program to talk about 100% renewable. You know, what are our plans to get there? Why are we doing that? We incorporate that to some degree, you know, in the Tri-Energy Program, but we just want to make sure that that continues. And we are also recommending very strongly that you fund a battery storage pilot designed to peak shave, enhance emergency preparedness. And the reason why we're suggesting a pilot is we have to test the receptivity of the market. Many times the utility comes out with these massive programs, and while they, on their face value, seem to be great, you know, like, for example, the South Fork Peak Savers Program, because they weren't, and this is our speculation, of course, it's always good to pilot something first, to really get a sense of the market and how the market likes to make decisions, before you put millions of dollars into a program and go full bore. So that's kind of what we're recommending here, because battery storage has a lot of promise, there's a lot of interest, and, you know, to see how it works for us.
And, sorry to interrupt again, but we do have...
Please. No, that's a question.
We do have sort of an unofficial policy on any new buildings and so forth, that we contemplate in the town, that we're attempting with solar on that as well. But some of those isolated buildings, particularly ones that are on the beach, or, you know, sort of grid-dependent, that may be a site for pilot testing. I'm thinking specifically of Tiana and some of the other things that we're doing down the road there, that might be a good way to do it.
That's a great idea.
The FEMA issue, though, is the one that hurt us at Tiana, where ultimately we had to put the backup generator 40 feet in the air. That was, you know, the first statement of no, but I think we found a way around that. But it's the legal issues that we need to work on, on how to make that happen. But if we demonstrate that on municipal buildings, you know, lead by example, I think that's a critical way to do that.
I can't tell you how, that's a great idea, and I can't tell you how many times, in fact, I think you were in the meeting in North Sea, when the audience is saying, "Well, why is there no solar on Town Hall?" You know? And then I try to explain, "Well, you need to talk to the town engineer, because I think some of those rooftops are not necessarily well-suited, but we're working towards that."
And we did do ground-based solar where that makes sense. We do have that as a law. That was based on the recommendation out of Sustainability Committee.
Yeah, you're going to hear more about that a little bit later.
I'd just like to add, if it didn't come out clear enough here, we are having a very close cooperation with East Hampton Town. We are sitting, the two of us are sitting on that equivalent committee of ours, and they're sitting on our committee. So we are exchanging constantly. So it is like, we are going totally South Fork and not just Southampton Town. So that's, I think that's an important part to know.
That's the other Gordian. This is Gordian.
That's the other Gordian.
Gordian, I should start on both, right?
Exactly. So do you want to go back to green buildings?
So we like, we like to go back now. And another thing is, we like to emphasize again that we are always going on a high-wire act. We are an advisory committee, and I hope you're not heading us from the head to heart that we are sometimes pretty much activists in many areas, right? So please understand that this is a fine line we have to sort of...
We understand. We're going back now?
Yeah, no, we're going back to Janice.
It's not that we don't discuss that either in the Sustainability Committee.
Okay. Janice, please.
Good morning, and I apologize for being late. So, did you go over anything?
No.
Oh, I skipped this. So the actions taken, obviously, are that the committee worked to incorporate sustainable elements on the Ponquag Beach bathing facility, and also, as a result of that, it's my understanding that the whole process for when capital projects are being vetted, that there's an inclusion of sustainable features, which Frank's opponent helped make a reality. So I just want to acknowledge that that was an important thing, that not only just Ponquag, but now coming forward, all of the capital projects have sort of a keeping it in mind, what sustainable features can be included, and that was a huge advance. And the Housing Authority advocating for sustainable elements, as you know, we had those two sustainable, I mean, affordable housing projects beyond Commons, which they're trying to incorporate solar, and they have all these green features in the buildings, as well as at Sandy Hollow. So those are important, and we want to keep doing that every time, so that the affordability also is with the person who has to pay for the electric and heat. You know, that's a whole huge component of keeping it affordable. It's not just the rent. It's so...
Janice, can I just interject? The housing people were and reported to our committee.
Yeah, we met with them.
We met with them, so that was quite helpful.
Right, so we try to keep doing that every time, to ask them to incorporate, you know, sustainable features. And the recommended opportunities are, so we have those HERS efficiency standards, you know, insulation and building efficiency standards for residential, but we really don't have that for commercial. So it's not called HERS in the commercial world. It's my understanding it's something different. So we're talking to John Barrows and, you know, the builder, building community, to try to figure out what we can do to, you know, because you put up a Morton Building, that's not necessarily, you know, insulated or has, you know, those kinds of features, but we'd like to...
It's kind of a modified Leeds in the commercial world, yeah.
Exactly. So we recommend that we bring, you know, try to work that through, and so that we're capturing the efficiency in the commercial construction world. And to that extent, I recommend, and the committee agrees, that we should start thinking about bringing self-generating, you know, also, commercial buildings doing solar. Like, I did the site plan for Canco's Tile, and they put solar on the roof, and that was great. They were like, "This is great." And they did it, you know, so why can't others do it as a matter of course? Say, "This is how much our energy needs are, and we're accounting for this much of our energy needs on-site." And so we think that's an important feature of sustainability that should be moved forward as we go along.
I mean, if I can just interject from wearing my other hat on the planning board, we have had some conversations with builders, specifically the Grovesky Airport project, where we said it would be great, you know, flat roofs, put some solar on, and an issue there was reflection with planes nearby. But generally, you get, it's expensive. And if we had a code that allowed us to enforce that, it would give, it would be a tool to make it happen.
So, you know, it's interesting you say that, because in our conversations with the developer there, we're exploring the building of a community center. And one of the requirements, it wasn't policy, but it was the requirement of our early negotiations, was that we consider sustainability, and we consider solar on the roof, et cetera, et cetera. So it kind of seeps into everything that we're doing now, and I think we need to strengthen the law to codify that in some way.
Right now, it's sort of optional, but if you're saying, "No, 30% of your energy is here," or whatever percentage makes sense, then they would have to come up with a reasonable way to do that.
A little trickier there because of the, you know, the airplanes overhead.
Well, not at Capreska, I mean, just generally.
Well, daily for, I think there was a fault...
They have other options, I think, if solar's not the right one.
Look at the new Audi dealership. That roof is so ideal for solar. You know, there's many buildings, the new building going up across the street at the same intersection from Hampton Coffee.
Oh, the hospital building?
Yeah. The Hospital Building. In Bridge Hampton Commons. They just resurfaced all, many of the roofs with cedar, when, you know, on the asphalt roof, they're redoing the roof anyway. They could actually get a tax break on the roof replacement if they put solar. I mean, that, you know...
And I think it goes even farther.
Lots of opportunity. If we have a little regulatory help, encouragement, which is what this would constitute, the truth of the matter is, it's not, I've been in conversations on commercial pricing with Grain Logic, and there's a lot of misinformation and understanding, but they're just, we want to push them to just at least consider having a meeting and going through an analysis and a proposal. And I think what I've seen is that if you look at the analysis over time, like if you have a multi-generational business, that argument goes away. It's not expensive. It actually, the costs flatten over time.
And the change, and I think you and I were at one meeting, which I was really surprised with, the architectural community as an industry were, I was surprised, unaware about orientation relative to orienting homes in reference to the sun.
Build it right.
Yeah, and understanding the technology. We have micro converters or inverters already in solar panels, so you don't need some of this other stuff that adds to all those costs. So it makes perfect sense to do this.
But working together across these different disciplines, I think we can really make a, because as you know, if we put solar on every single building, we still are only moving the needle a little bit in terms of our renewable goals. So we need those commercial buildings to come on board.
But our 100% renewable goal is impacted by the reduction of consumption of power generated by fossil fuel rather than alternative energies. So even if it's moving the needle a little bit, that's just one piece of a whole strategy that you guys are...
It's a double good guy.
We have one commercial entity, the Wilford Vineyard. They have solar now.
Oh, yeah, the Vineyard. Yeah, Wilford did. Yeah, we actually pushed that from a relationship that he had.
So we're still with Janice, right?
And that's it, really, and just incentivizing green elements. When planning workforce housing, as you know, form and density follows financing in a lot of these models, where people are using tax credits and things like that. And so there could be other ways, and then they say, "Well, we don't have any money to put these features," you know, "because this is it." And so there's got to be a way to make that work and allow for them to not only provide workforce housing, but put those sustainable features in.
But you're, just one quick question. Your outreach also includes those industry professionals that do have the ability to affect site orientation, architects?
They don't now. We would, though.
Yeah.
If you, yeah, if you fund that, yeah, sure, we could, absolutely. It's the natural progression.
So we're going to go to what, quality of life then?
Well, education.
Next, education.
Real quick, we're trying to go after new demographics, as John just pointed out. We had a couple of events. We had a graduate student help us with our solar benchmarking effort, working with Mike Lieberman, who's very critical to that. I want to just make a mention that I took it, you know, kind of on the fly. We've included battery storage in some cases, but I started talking about septic, want to do it these presentations. Holy cow, people are so interested in this topic and know nothing. So I just wanted to leave that with you. I'm not sure what your plan is with regards to outreach program for the, you know, the whole septic replacement.
We know we need...
We've talked, we've talked a lot about it, because I think the town's experienced the same thing, that it's, this is, requires a longer conversation than a soundbite.
Yeah.
So I know we're working, like, with PEP. They're interested in doing a lot of our outreach, help with that, so, you know, I completely support that. Janice and I sometimes huddle to try to figure out how to do that, because we keep running into that problem.
And then the last thing I want to mention is, I did participate in these, in these information sessions, as I mentioned before, with Boham. That's the Bureau of Energy, Ocean Energy Management. And I made an offer, and I've already talked to the town trustees, to do an education session for the fishermen on energy. My observation is that there's a, as it relates to energy, energy usage, what the options are, there's a lot of misinformation that's been perpetuated as a result of, you know, the debate that had been going on in East Hampton. So the town trustees are going to work with us to put this together. We're going to put together something on a, is it going to be a one-off? And I would really welcome participation and review by some board members on that. But I think it's an opportunity for us to get ahead of, you know, to build some bridges and get ahead of, because there's a, you know, there's a lot of change coming. You know, the parcels they're talking about to meet the New York State requirements are going to be equivalent to around 80 turbines. It doesn't look like they're going to be anywhere near us, but notwithstanding, it's 80 turbines in the water, and the community's against it. So we want to help them understand the bigger picture, blah, 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 and more to follow. So recommending to fund measurement and reporting, we talked about that earlier, of progress against our sustainability objectives, and publish it on the website. Also, we need to continually refresh, this rebate information is really valuable to our constituents, to your constituents. We want to make sure that the town has staffing, or somebody's designated to actually update that information on a continual basis. That's it.
Great, thank you.
Wait a minute, I have to answer.
Kristine, all that for show.
Yeah, because you know what? Your boot was on the other foot, yes.
You got to get your boot.
Okay, any questions to Lynn on the... Okay, any questions to Lynn on this?
I know, I think she's good.
It's okay?
Let's go on.
Okay, then we go to quality of life topics. Now, this will be reported on by Joe. As you can see, on the bottom, on the champions, there's our old chairman, Tim Rowland. And he has been very instrumental to help this along. So he couldn't come today, but Joe, being the chairman of this, our subcommittee on plastics, will report on that. Joe, go ahead.
A newly formed subcommittee.
That's a newly formed subcommittee.
Couple of months old.
Yeah, we're trying to work on an acronym. It's Plastic Alternative Subcommittee. Is that now?
Yep.
We are working to phase out.
I'm sorry, Joe, before you start, I just want to also point out that Joe sits on our solid waste advisory committee as liaison to the sustainability committee. Will be joining sustainability, because he brings, that's what he's bringing to the table.
Thank you.
All the things that he's learned on the solid waste advisory.
Could we please get the authorization from the?
It's in the works.
We are in the process of trying to phase out single-use plastics and styrofoam within the town. We are currently in the final stages of our fat gathering. And now we're working on a questionnaire for local businesses to just get a feel of their opinions. And it sounds small, but it's a really big topic because styrofoam and the plastics are just really hindering us. And we're trying to, it's just hard to sum up everything that we're doing because of the difficulties that we're encountering.
It's mostly like the effects on marine mammals, things like that?
It's similar to the bag initiative, but probably 10 times more difficult to get a grasp of. And we're lucky to have a liaison who's off that with us. And.
You know, there's been voluntary efforts to get restaurants and things to.
That is a separate note. That's what I've been trying to work on.
Yeah, we actually had Surf Rider folks come to the committee and talk specifically about the straw issue, which is what created Joe's subcommittee.
At lunch, I was.
And look at it bigger.
Yesterday, where I had lunch, they didn't offer any straws.
Yeah, I like that. That's really nice to see.
It's fine.
The volunteer sustainability program that I was thinking of is loosely based on Cuomo's Green Business Initiative, taking it a little bit further. And it's a voluntary-based program where businesses, where the town would recognize and support and promote businesses that are participating in this plan. And I think it's a good idea because it would give the option for all of Southampton, not just the town. We could even include the villages. It would just be any business that meets certain criteria would be available to participate.
So if they volunteer to adhere to some of these guidelines and reduce their plastic use, that we would.
They recycle, they get better lighting, they pay attention to their waste, they actually have to monitor, which would, it's more beneficial for the businesses to do this anyway, because then they would actually keep track of what they're using, how much is going out as waste, what they're recycling. And it's just a win-win, I believe, and it's a voluntary-based.
Yeah, this is an idea that has come up in the committee many times, and no one has grabbed it and said, I'm going to own it and do something about it. But Joe said, I'm going to do that.
I mentioned it actually a couple of years ago to the solid waste committee.
Yeah.
And I thought it was a good idea, but actually, they kind of put it on the backburner as well.
Well, we thought it was a good idea, especially if you were willing to champion it, because we're all volunteers. We need someone to do the next step. So great for Joe.
So what are some of the issues with plastics? Why would we do a program like this?
Plastic.
I mean, I know it, but I think it's appropriate to give a brief overview.
Just styrofoam in general is extremely harmful. It's probably, for some reasons, number two. Aluminum and then styrofoam are really major causes that people are looking into right now.
So if you use a styrofoam container for 15 minutes, it stays around for what, 400,000 years?
Essentially, yes.
And there's no facilities to process styrofoam anywhere.
It's within our area, yeah. I mean.
There are chemicals that leach into the food.
Yeah.
So it fills our landfills and leaches things into our groundwater.
And if you burn, you get toxic gases, so it doesn't work either.
It's just not needed. And I was actually just thinking yesterday that when I was a child, I just remember, you know, they would give you a little styrofoam cup to just keep you quiet and have a alarm. And I was like, wow.
Hours of fun.
I just thought of that yesterday and was horrified at what's in my body.
I remember chewing a lot of styrofoam.
Yeah, exactly.
If I'd explain things, I know.
If styrofoam went away, I don't think anybody would miss it, you know, it would, because there's all these new alternatives. So it's kind of, the idea is to find, okay, what are the other alternatives to all this packaging and plastic? And seek those out as real viable options. Because if you say, okay, all plastic is banned, everybody would go crazy because they need, you know, what are we going to use?
You have to have alternatives that are cost-effective.
Right. So a big role in the subject is to determine what else is there first, before you start saying you can't use X, Y, and Z.
There's a very good example, EDF, Environmental Defense Fund. They went to, many years ago, they went to McDonald's and said, we've done a study. McDonald's said, we didn't order studies. No, we did it ourselves. He said, do you have these styrofoam cups? Don't you like to be a green company? He said, of course we like to. What do we have to do? He said, look, we worked out, if you replace that with cartons and get rid of this one, you're saving money, you're the green company, and everything is fine. You help the environment. You don't see any more styrofoam cups for burgers at McDonald's. That was just one huge step in that area to eliminate it. And that is what we put on all what we're doing.
I remember those styrofoam containers.
It's like clam chills.
So the whole thing is, what Joe and his subcommittee is doing is finding out when they go forward in the end is, what is a replacement product? So that we don't say we're banning? No, how do we replace it with? And that is a key. Like what we did with the bags. Bring your own bag versus, so this is the step to do it.
Alternatives and education.
And there's enormous amount of data, which they have taken. I'm surprised how much there is around. What can be done and how to go about it. And even the small little thing is, don't supply straws. If they ask for someone, you can have it, and then it's paper. And the reduction of straws handed out by not voluntarily giving them is alone that what you save in the money for the more expensive paper or other straws versus the plastic straw. So it's a very simple way of getting rid of straws.
So I wanted to add to that, because we also have a global change in how we're dealing with garbage and our landfills are getting, you know, we all know about that locally, but globally, we've lost a major receiver of our recycled plastics in China. It's almost 30% now of plastics that we have really no way to recycle. It's very hard to recycle with the types of technology and the types of plastics. It's not as wonderful as people think that, you know, you put that there. And that's not quite how it works. And China was a big receiver of that. Now we have this 30% that we have to deal with. As a town, we also have to deal with that. As a regional area, we have to deal with that. The other point I want to make is, and I asked Joe, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but the county legislator, Han, has a group, a task force that they have, which I think Southampton can contribute to. And I'd like to find some way to get some representation on that and looking at that from the county perspective. Because we have to deal with the vast amounts of garbage here that get transferred out of Southampton. And that affects our budget, that affects everything here. So I really applaud the, and it's very evident that a lot of businesses support this. You know, it's very noticeable. When you go places, there's no longer plastic in a lot of places, particularly straws and things like that. It's not an outright ban, but it's being smart, as we've talked about, how we do that, find alternatives and do that. So I think this is a great initiative, and hopefully we can get somebody on the task force in the county as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think the amount of media on the straw issue is also, has been helpful because the consumers are less likely to demand it because they understand. So it's not just the restaurants, but you and I when we go out, well, we don't need a straw because we know how bad that is.
Yeah, and I think Surf Rider was a, you know, great initiator of that. And, you know, fundamentally changed the way they do outreach, which I think is very cool. They've sort of grown into a broader way of, and I know they presented to the sustainability committee, but they seem to be everywhere. And it's good data that's contained.
Any more questions or any problem you folks, Joe?
Well, there's one, there's one last point that was not covered.
That probably should be covered.
Yeah, if I may, air quality. At the Brookhaven public hearing, when they, for Katniss, they were planning to give a permit approval, which they did, although it expired, which is good news, so they can't build a new power plant, but without going through the whole process again. But at that meeting, it was revealed by a science teacher who did a beautiful presentation. We're going to try to invite her to come here to meet and make a presentation to us. She has a lot of data about air quality in Suffolk County, but specifically around that compressed natural gas power plant and the effect, health effects. Now, the reason why we care about that, well, we care about it, of course. But the temporary generators, remember we talked about this when you guys unanimously approved that, you know, the, what have you? So in East Hampton, they had two temporary generators, and now there's three temporary generators. We are going to foil some data about that. We don't know if they're doing air measures. Chances are they have to, from a regulatory perspective, I would guess they do. But, you know, as time passes on, those temporary generators are likely to come here next. And so we want to get ahead of this. So we're suggesting, we're recommending that we just, you know, work together somehow to focus on this. Let's do a little research to understand, is this an issue? Maybe it's not an issue. But these temporary generators, when they're running, do emit a lot of nasty stuff into the atmosphere and affect the health of the people in the immediate vicinity.
Diesel generators?
Well, the new ones are compressed natural gas, but then there are the diesel generators that actually.
The old ones.
That one is diesel, I believe. But, so we want to get, this is not, this is a different angle to make our argument against more peaker plants being forced on us by the utility because of health concerns. So that's why.
Generally, it's the state that, you know, I always get these air quality warnings. It comes from the DEC, so I'm assuming it's the state that does that test.
Yeah, mentioning that as well. But the reason, this is, it is a quality of life issue. Air quality is in this group. It's also in another group. So that's why it's here.
Our grid is largely fed from the west, from power plants, but we're going to have that cable coming in from the Deepwater Wind Facility, which is going to put a lot of energy into a system from the east coming into Wayne Scott. Hopefully, at that point, they won't need these extra diesel or whatever, these extra.
Well, actually, they will. They will. They have to have an equivalent amount of capacity onshore at the insertion point of where offshore wind comes in, in order to deal with the intermittency issue. And when we have the meeting that I talked about earlier, we'll talk about that in more detail.
Well, then hopefully they're not running very often.
Well, that's the hope, yeah.
That's the key thing. It's only about a few days.
It's our peak times that they have the same issue.
They still have to be here and we have to pay for them. And as an elected official.
That's a separate issue to the air quality issue.
Yes, it is. As an elected official, I would want you to be as prepared as you could be for, because you got, you got to believe that the people who live in the vicinity of where this stuff is going to get built are going to have that data. So, you know, we're trying to make sure that you've got it.
No, I appreciate that.
Any more questions in that area? Then we go to transportation and our chairman of the subcommittee and champion of the thing is Nick Alamo.
Thanks, Peter. And I think you twice now described me as chair of the transportation subcommittee. And if that's the case, then I think I'm a subcommittee of one. So I think that.
That's what you are.
Well, you can tell yourself what to do.
Yeah, champion of the sub. I think probably what's more fair to say is that over the last several years in my involvement with this committee, you know, I've taken a real interest and tried to suggest some opportunities related to transportation. Because in my mind, transportation is an important air quality issue for this region, water quality certainly, and also just quality of life. The transportation really impacts the quality of life on the East End. And I think there are some really exciting opportunities right now to transform our transportation models in a way that's really more sustainable. And so I've been working closely with the Transportation Commission, with Tom Neely's group, and trying to introduce some sustainability to them and liaising what they're doing back to this committee and kind of sharing in both directions. And I'll skip over the 2017 actions, but suffice it to say that a lot of things have happened in the past year that really sets us up to do some interesting things in the year to come. And I'll talk a little bit about that. Just running through the planned actions, it's listed here that the town has been awarded a DEC grant to install two electric vehicle charging stations at town properties. I don't really have the details there. Maybe Christine can fill in what's happening?
We received two brands, one brand for two allocations of $16,000 for EV charging stations to be installed at Goodground Park and the Shinnakak Maritime Canal Park. So we're very excited about that.
And so the importance of that, the significance of it, and it's something that I've been very involved in, both here at the town and also at the college and my work with the US Green Buildings Council on promotion of electric vehicles, is that there's an opportunity there to really change our primary mode of transport, which for most of us is the car, and, you know, and reduce significantly the impacts that that has on our environment and air quality. And the statistic that I can point to is that for the Nassau Suffolk region, it's estimated that 40% of our overall greenhouse gas emissions are related to transportation. So obviously, it's a significant impact, a significant factor there. And if we can reduce that through promotion of electric vehicles, and again, the town has an important leadership role to serve here. I think, you know, to the extent that the town fleet can be, can begin to be transformed in that manner, it shows the viability of electric vehicles for daily operation. And then hopefully, people will follow that model.
There's a, there's an issue there. Maybe it's because we don't have enough charging stations for that fleet. But I noticed that those cars aren't being used very much. And maybe people just fear they're going to run out of electricity. The hybrids get used a lot because they can always pull into a gas station, but the electric ones are not getting the type of use that I'd like to see. They're often just sitting in the back. So I think it's great that we have them. And I think we have to kind of change our mindset a little bit.
Yeah, I would agree. I think that's critical.
To get people to choose to use the electric cars.
And you're really right about that. And we've talked about it. And one of the issues is charging stations. So if you look at the town of Southampton, it's 300 square miles. And with current charging, you know, range on cars, it's a little problematic. So in order, you have to determine where to put those charging stations for town employees to do their jobs in a way where they can get charged and then move to different areas.
Well, I think they think somehow that they're going to get stuck.
Yeah, well, it's a, there's a culture change.
I think there's something in the mindset that we need to work on.
A couple of issues there, certainly. I think, you know, we were talking, number one, about public access to electric vehicle charging, and I think the town has a role there, but also the town fleet. And I think part of that on both sides of the equation is education, that people have to understand, you know, what their daily driving habits really consist of and what the vehicles themselves are capable of and where those two match up. And I think that's changing. As the technology evolves, battery electric vehicle technology has evolved a lot in the last several years. I myself, and the proud new owner of a Tesla, over the last several months, I've driven a hybrid for a long time, but I was always concerned about making that leap to a fully electric vehicle and concerned that, you know, it would impact my ability to do what I need to do on a daily basis. And the reality is that the range of most electric vehicles today is more than sufficient for most people's needs. In fact, I find, you know, I really could get away with charging my car once a week, at best. It's got a 300 mile range. And really, what that charging consists of is charging at night when I wouldn't be using the car anyway. And, you know, the cars can plug into almost any power source. So you don't really need a charging station per se. You need an electric outlet, and the cars themselves have chargers built in.
Which is a slightly different situation for municipal.
Right. And so municipal fleet is a different situation. But I think it's something that can be done over time, that you can make provisions for, you know, where your fleet is typically parked, to have access to an electric source. And there are a lot of incentives to municipalities for the infrastructure to support fleet recharging. But the biggest challenge, I think, is, as you said, you know, it's just the perception of, you know, what the vehicles can do. And I can't speak directly to that, but I would say that probably for a large portion of your daily municipal fleet use, the electric vehicles are more than sufficient.
And I, you know, from my standpoint, if we. And I, you know, from my standpoint, if we put these, these things in place, and we're trying to change culture from the public's purview, that we should lead by example. So I, and Christine knows this, I'm always harping on her, more cars and more use and more evidence that, you know, this works. And I think that's a big way to make that happen.
Yep. But just to continue with that thread, certainly, we want to see movement of, of our cars to electrification, because there's advantages that way, but we also want to encourage alternative modes of transportation and get people to consider things other than driving cars for their daily use. And, and obviously, the Transportation Commission is doing really good work there in terms of the commuter rail connection that's coming on. And what I've been working on with that, with that group is to try and get them to consider options related to the last mile, that, you know, people who are now going to take that train and have to get from the train station to where they work. And we're talking about public-private partnerships. I'm sure that Tom's probably shared with, with you all, some opportunities that exist there, and I think an RFP is being crafted. That will create opportunities for people to access some means of, of transportation from the train station to where they're going to work, which is largely in the hamlet centers.
What about bike shares?
Yeah, and so bike share, I think we've reported to this committee on several occasions about the, the county bike share initiative, which I was working to advocate on, and the county executive put out an RFP, which my understanding is that, well, an announcement was made that a contract was soon to be awarded, and I haven't seen any more detail on that. I guess they're still trying to work out some of the, the legal language there, but it's...
Definitely have with that last mile issue.
It absolutely will.
Get off the train, and it's a nice day, maybe they would have to take a bike rather than jump on the subway.
So that's, that's definitely coming, and it will be part of the county's shared services initiative, so that municipalities can access that contract and, and work directly with the vendor to set up bike share in, in our communities, you know, at, at your direction. And I think that, that absolutely represents a way to, for people to connect for that, that last little bit of their daily commute. And I think the hope is that that contract will be finalized sometime this summer, and it, it sets up that, you know, an announcement could be made at the local level, because I think the county is looking for communities to sort of pilot this effort, and, and I'm hopeful that the town will embrace that. And so other things that, that we're doing with the Transportation Commission, we've been talking a lot about biking, not just the bike share program, but also, you know, Safe Routes to Bike, and a lot of discussions happening there. And Mike, I don't know if you want to talk yet about some of the grant applications that are being worked on?
Mike, I don't know if we can get you if you, there is a microphone there, so maybe that's okay.
We did recently have a work session, so you're at this time pretty up to date. We have the Town Board Resolution on the 24th passed, so we will be moving forward with applying to the TAP grant, that the application is due on August 16th.
Good.
Right, and I wasn't...
That's a Red Creek Park to Goodground Park to downtown Hampton Base.
Yes, and I wasn't here for that presentation, but we've had discussions internally about that being part of a larger effort that's underway statewide, in fact. The governor's announced this Empire State Trail, which is a bike trail network mostly upstate at this point, but the hope is to bring that to Long Island and, and to, you know, get alignment for a, a large bike trail that would extend from Manhattan to Montauk, which seems really like a real challenge, but it's, it's happening upstate. And I think that the right groups are, are coming together to try and make that happen on Long Island. And, and again, hopefully, the, the town can participate in that effort and, you know, contribute to the planning of that.
And some of that conversation comes up in discussion with having, you know, side spurs and, you know, with, with having more trains, it's all part of that infrastructure. So if you're going to invest in an infrastructure, it would seem like the right time to invest in, in adding to that infrastructure to support those kinds of...
And I think, you know, in probably in most of the rest of the state, this is seen as an active recreation-type initiative, but I think here, it also holds some promise potentially as, as an alternative transportation opportunity. You know, if we can sort of connect the hamlets that way, that it could be a really good thing. We, we will continue, and Lynn mentioned earlier, some events that the town has organized to showcase electric and hybrid vehicles, will continue along those lines. And the town is, is participating in that regional electric vehicle coalition that I was involved in forming. It's a lot of different stakeholder groups coming together to, to share in that undertaking. And then the recommended opportunities you see listed here, funding for outreach to encourage intermodal transportation opportunities, analyzing the impact of electric vehicles on, on the grid. Again, this is one of those things that comes up often, that there's concern that the advent of electric vehicles is some how going to negatively impact our, our electric infrastructure. And I think, in fact, I know what, what's been seen when this has been studied closely, and I think PSEG is about, PSEG Long Island is about to unveil a, a study that they've done, which will show in part that electric vehicles actually are beneficial to the electric grid, that they can be utilized, if, if they're utilized appropriately and, and rate structures are, are set up in, in the right way, that they can help with some of the, the load balancing issues that renewable energies creates. And so it sort of creates that off-peak demand that, that our electric grid...
And I think some of that technology is, will be driving down the individual charging stations for residential use for hybrid vehicles. So my, my calculation is on my, because I own two Priuses, and I, my calculation works out that what I'm consuming in power is equivalent to about 14 cents per equivalent gallon. So that's a huge range. And it doesn't really show up that way. So it, you know, it would be beneficial to be able to separate that, that charging from, you know, but we may surpass that with the technologies for range on battery range for vehicles, where, you know, typical four or 500 mile range is, right now, I'm getting almost 2,000 miles to a tank, you know, so it, it's right there, you know, right at the cost.
And I think one of the other things that, that the industry is evolving toward is a model where they can actually create vehicle-to-grid opportunities, so that you can use a battery electric vehicle to feed into the grid when there is excess demand, so it becomes...
Which they're doing in New London, right? So they do that with their businesses, their whole fleets are electric, and they have a, they basically have a giant parked battery for when they come off the grid.
I just want to say, though, that while all these things are being discussed, none of it is available yet. So we, we run the risk if we're out there promoting, everybody get an EV, putting further strain on the grid during periods where we have this surge, like in the summer, right? Thursday to Sunday, we had that heat wave on July 30th through the, you know, through the 4th. It's, we, we want to make sure that, it's mixed messages.
No, I agree with you, it's all, but it's also like, like the, the old Priuses, the old Priuses, they actually, most people don't know that they can connect that to their home. So if they're off of grid, it's basically a standing generator. You know, there are, there are a lot of little things in there that are part of that outreach to help it with exactly that issue, that impression that people are left with that may not always be correct.
And also, as you're aware, Lynn, that, that peak demand on our utility grid occurs at a very specific period in time. And, and there's a lot of the year that there, there is nowhere near that, that level of demand. And that is the perfect opportunity to utilize some of our generation capacity to address our transportation needs.
Yeah, and I think that's a regulatory issue, we should, we should be involved in that as a committee.
I'm not reaching, our outreach is, you know, as good as it is, we're still only reaching a small number as, as a percentage of the population. And, you know, we need to do better.
There's a, there's a big education component there, so that's pretty much...
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Nick.
Now we'll be going to the stewardship topics, and it's Ann Reisman and Gloria Burke. Gloria, my co-chair, is going to take over.
Okay, well, I'm going to focus stewardship on a way that we want to repurpose or reuse these facilities we already have. And so, for example, we want to continue working with Parks and Recreation, so that when they're looking at making changes, that they're looking at sustainability. And I'm happy to hear that that's becoming part of the whole process, because we'd like to have our two sets involved and, and provide some examples or suggestions on using that kind of work, not just to be sustainable, but also to be a way for the community to understand how these things can happen. So they can be teaching tools or examples of here, I might be able to do this in my own home, whether it's solar or an efficient septic system. So, you know, we want to continue working with the town on that kind of stuff.
Do you think, I mean, it's great in that regard that we have Janice Scher on the grid, because she's a great liaison for planning any projects that we see. I don't know if you saw the work session on the Ponco Pavilion incorporates a lot of the things that you want to see. Do you think it would be at all of a benefit, just in terms of education? I mean, we're employing a lot of those, implementing a lot of the very things that we see in the sustainability plan into that design. Would it be a benefit to perhaps have like small, not obnoxious, but like maybe small little signage that says that this is a blank kind of...
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, I think that's...
Waste water in the bathrooms, for the solar, just little things that say this is whatever, and just they know what, they see it in action. They go and use it, but they don't...
Because they don't understand what they're seeing or...
Exactly, yeah. So that might be something we might want to...
It's hit or miss, because there is a little bit of that, but, you know, like in Crowhan, you, they talk about, you know, it's low water use kind of stuff and things like that.
Right, that kind of stuff, I think, might be helpful.
Hampton Base Middle School is a LEED certified, and there's a big old plaque, so everybody knows it.
Yeah, no, so that's, I mean, that kind of outreach, that's, that's outreach that's easy, because you just could pay for a plaque on the wall, and it's, it's done. We also want to work with the trustees, looking at having ways for resilient shoreline design. I mean, that's a huge challenge, because so many homeowners want to just be able to have beautiful grass right down to the, to the water. So that's, that's an area that we can work on. Going back to reusing, we, we should look at the places that are already disturbed, whether that's a transfer station or a Bradfield site, to, and this may require zoning changes, but use it for solar, use it for another, another purpose, so that it's already been somewhat made not so nice, and...
It's redevelopment.
We can redevelop it. So that's the whole idea of reuse.
Looking at that for the cap landfill in North Sea possibly, as a solar site.
That's my transfer station.
Okay.
But we also put law in place as a result of recommendations from this committee to do the ground-based solar, and that is available to us. So I think we have the tools if we need to change them in some way.
We can adjust them.
Look at that, yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, I think the last recommendation would be, we've got, we've got it, the Tupper Boathouse, which is in the process of being figured out how to reuse it. And so here's an opportunity. Hopefully, we can work on that, with that project, that we can use it as a showcase, because it's now, it, how we're going to use it, it's an empty building. So we're hopefully being able to do something on that end. So I guess my, my, my voice here is just to take the stuff that's already there, and let's figure out how to use it in a much more sustainable way. And, you know, we're doing that in a lot of places, but let's do more of it. And I love your idea, Christine, of, of making the showcase be labeled, so that people understand.
Okay, then, if there are no more questions, then, then we go to the next page, how we can do even better. That page I consider is, is very important for, it says what we need and what, what you can possibly do. Go to the budget item, active, pursue grant and other funding opportunities. That is really crucial, for money is always tight, so wherever there are opportunities, very important to go after those. Develop capital operating fund allocations within town budget. Under the resource allocation, assigned staff to high consultant model measure published results against sustainable targets. That is what Lynn just mentioned before is, we are not doing a good job to tell the constituents what we're doing and what the result of that is. So we need some resources that we can go out and say, look, we've done all this, you don't know about it. That we don't get, when, when Lynn makes a presentation, that they say, oh, we didn't know about it, they, they should have known about it. For all the things which are done in town, not enough, in our opinion, is going out to the public.
You, you guys are aware of it, though, right? Like, what if you did like a quarterly, I thought we, at some point, were supposed to do that with the sustainability plan with the tracking, it showed where we were in the process, whatever, it's within the plan, so I mean, but if you guys...
I agree with that, because my, my next question was, where are we deficient in meeting the recommendations of, say, the 400, the sustainability 400 plan?
We do have a tracking spread that we...
But that's your, I think that's your pipeline to be able to discuss that in a public way.
We have to toot our horn.
Toot it.
The benchmarking effort...
You can do that.
Well, you can develop press releases, work with our communications person, Connie upstairs, she can get press releases out for you and, you know, do a public outreach in the town.
But we want to reinforce the benchmarking work that that guy over there is doing is so critical, and we just need to...
I think the word actually is getting out. I think that people are starting to change how they think about these issues. I feel it out there?
Yeah, they are. This, this just could reinforce it, that's, we're just saying, this, it's, what we're doing is, is okay, just could be better.
I think there's also events and the expose and things like that, or, you know, because...
Yeah, see, I'm not sure I agree with that, because I, you know, there's a lot that goes on in this committee, and a lot of the work that they're doing sort of stops at someplace, maybe here. And so only the people watching what's going on are aware of what this committee's doing and what the very real impacts you're having on some of our local code and what we're trying to do. I, you know, I'm always surprised that people are unaware of the ground-based solar law. You know, I expected, I thought that would be taking advantage of...
How many proposals do you have?
We have none.
Zero.
So, you know...
Could you be allocating more like website resource or, you know, putting things more, more content?
I think we can get creative, Janice.
You know, doing that kind of...
And I, and actually, I feel remiss that we should be working harder on that, because we have the same issue with septic. We, you know, we're reviewing what we're doing as, as a board and looking at all these projects, and there's a lot of stuff going on.
Well, we ought to take a topic of constituent outreach, so the recommendation is constituent outreach as a broad topic. Let's put our heads together and see what we could...
But it's finding the venue to do that in an efficient, effective way, and that, you know, that tends to be problematic.
I just want to say that I, I believe the town of Southampton really is viewed as a leader regionally. I mean, when I go to sustainability events anywhere on the island, you know, very often names on it is invoked in talking about, you know, leadership on, on various issues that we've talked about today.
Absolutely.
So it, the message is getting out, I think we can do better, but there's an awareness that that's happening.
Hence, hence, it's right here.
I've been invited to do best practices presentations in New York City, in Bedford, in Westchester, in West Salem, so the word is, as Nick said, is definitely...
I mean, I, I think to, to next point, the, the educated know.
Right.
We, we have to figure out how to get to those people who are not the green junkies.
I mean, I think we're stressed on that in a number of areas, just because people are busy, and, I mean, certainly, we can try and do better in more creative ways, it's, it's a little bit of a challenge just because of the...
And Christine is just not moving as fast as she used to.
Oh, me. Fast up there. Get everywhere.
But I think Christine Fenton had something she wanted to say.
Just to talk about the public education and outreach, I think it's so critically important on so many of the topics that are included here, as well as the one that we're going to be talking about next, solid waste. Some, some of it's regulatory required to do the public education and outreach. The South Fork commuter connection option, that, that alternative transportation, that's going to be critically important to get the word out to the constituents, to let them know of that opportunity and how to take advantage of it. Same thing with the septics. It's, there's a whole palette of opportunities that, that the public is missing out on because the education and outreach is not there. And I think that component of it is going to be exponentially more beneficial to get out into the community and not just rely solely on PSAs and website content and that sort of...
And we're going to have to do more than civics, because, I mean, Christine and I were both doing for like two years in compliance with the permny process, going to all the civics and telling them, you remember that, Gloria? All the things that you can incorporate at home that are just best practices and help us with our wastewater runoff and all the other stormwater runoff.
And partnerships can, can be very beneficial with the PEP. We have that Kindergarten Protection Committee working group for the stormwater education. I just wanted to bring that up. We talked about, as a wrap-up, was the budget impact in both operational, where the public education outreach would most appropriately be housed, as well as capital. And some of the thoughts that we've had... And some of the thoughts that we've had, or I've had anyway, I think we all have, is that Flanders Community Center, when it was originally designed and implemented, it was designed as a LEED certified building. However, we never went to commissioning of it. We're actually doing a lot of work over there right now. We renovated the lower level as office space. In the upcoming year, we're going to be putting an exterior stairwell out to get to that lower level in addition to the internal elevator. Be a wonderful opportunity to also include solar for that building as well as a EV charging station that could service that, that community as well if we put it closer to the road. So just wanted to wrap it up with some, some considerations for the budget of real, real implementation.
Great, thanks Christine.
Okay, we are coming then to appendices. We don't have to go into detail over that. It just shows you, you can read through it at your own time, what the committee has done, some subject discussed, presentations to the Green Committee by outside groups and involvement of members in certain activities during the course of, of, of last year.
We just want to make sure you know we were, we were not unbusy.
No. That's one outreach that you know maybe you guys have been doing.
So that, that concludes our presentation. Thank you for your time and this is, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work, all volunteer, and we appreciate it. All right, so we're going to switch gears here. Though related, we're going to move on to an update on our waste management plan permit program. We are joined by Christine Fenton, our Director of Municipal Works.
Good morning.
Good morning. Sorry, we're a little behind schedule.
That's okay.
It happens.
We're sustaining.
All right, thank you. I wanted to, are we good to go?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to give another update on the solid waste management plan that the town's been working on. If you recall, I made a presentation to you at work session on April 12th of this year. And we talked about the plan going to public hearing next and the permit and track. We've since been advised since that by the DEC that we don't need to go through the public hearing process. We need to go through a 30 day public comment process. So that, that's welcome. So I would like to work with Sunday on the logistics, Sunday and the town attorney's office on the logistics.
It'll be a 30 day comment period on the plan?
On that.
The draft plan.
Draft plan.
So you have to post it somewhere?
They said to post it, you could post it in your libraries or online or in town offices and then put the legal notice in the paper that it's available for review.
It's going to be a little bit of a challenge.
Absolutely.
Maybe we could put a link at the town website.
That, that's where our current solid waste management plan is, is housed right now.
Can I ask a question?
Some people who want to comment probably know about the regulatory requirements. There, there are people out there who are going to be looking for it. At least they'll be able to find it.
Yes.
I'm sure the general public is.
And you could publicize it as many times as you want when you're in the board or.
Is there like an executive summary, just like if a, a member of the public just wants to know what it is? Because a lot of people that are looking like.
There's an executive summary located within the document. It essentially tells you, the, the entire report is our location description, what we've done in the past. We went from landfilling to transfer stations. Now what our goals are for the future in terms of waste reduction, long term care of the landfill, how we came to our current scenario of residential self hauling of waste to the four transfer stations, how the town needs to get a better handle on the waste streams throughout the other sectors of town, meaning residential, commercial, industrial, institutional, biosolids, that sort of thing. DEC really wants the town to have a better handle on what's going on in terms of waste management within its jurisdiction.
And is that just the stuff that's brought to our transfer station or private cars as well?
It's outside as well. So that's where that private carter permit and track program comes in, which will see the resolution to reestablish those fees at the next town board meeting. And it was $2.50 for the first truck, $25 for every additional vehicle.
So just to be clear that this is what the, the state is telling us that we need to do and we need to.
An unfunded mandate.
So in terms of process.
Well, it is.
It's something that they should be doing, not us.
The, the public comment period, that is for the town board to consider the comments.
That's for the town to receive the comments on the document. And then the process after that is we receive the comments, we review what looks to be appropriate in, for inclusion. We include them. Then it goes through a secret process through Department of Land Management and then it gets adopted by town board resolution. And, and the DEC has approved the draft, the, the bones of what we did.
So we'll have public comment as well with our meeting.
That, that's the hope.
But this also gets to, you know, it's budget time and what those costs are to you. And I think Christine's point is well taken. It is an unfunded mandate and what, what does it actually, what does that mean? Is that?
Well, a huge component, there's a couple of things I want to talk to today about. So DEC actually just amended their part 360 regulations which govern solid waste management. So there was a couple of changes, including the, the requirement for the solid waste management plan. And that establishes the, the deadline for these reports, which we have to have it on the books by the end of the year.
End of this year.
Yes. It also includes an implementation plan of 10 years out to make, to, with the goal of getting the education out there, the outreach and to reduce waste production and increase waste recycling within our limits. You had asked me the last time on like a synopsis, the implementation plan. So I broke it down. These are just my cheat sheets because I, I knew that you were going to ask questions and I wanted to get to them.
Glad you remembered.
Yes. Very, very much on my mind. So we had a number of items in the implementation plan with certain years that we would progress them or initiate them. So I broke them down into legislative, public education and outreach, operational, which I really don't need to talk about too much, organics management, local governments and partnerships, and the commercial institutional sector. For the legislative, begin, I have begin work on the future potential town code revisions to further address waste management on new commercial developments. This could also be part and parcel with the planning for the hers rating or what have you, to use more sustainable materials to recycle the C and D material, construction demolition material to a greater extent possible than just throwing it out and having it go to a, to a landfill. Sometimes it's easier to just demolish a building and stick it in the roll offs and it, it goes, you know, goodbye. But it just takes a little effort to say, okay, I have all these windows. Let me call a window contractor or a historic restoration company and, or some other entity that may have a reuse purpose for it. There's a lot of recycling, repurpose agencies out there that are looking for these things for either resale or redistribution.
And that comes up in our landmarks board quite often, you know, and you're right, there isn't really a, a process in place for that to happen.
And just to get the education and outreach associated with that, I signed up to a repurpose website that I get emails every week about nationally, you know, this company made these windows to the wrong spec for their customer and now they need to get rid of them. So they'll sell them for 50% off, you know, 75% off, large quantity items. So being on something like that, it really gives you some information on how you could save money while reusing something that would otherwise perhaps be waste.
Would we need some companion code to allow places to store, you know, such recycled materials? I love it. And I've been to a number of them, I think. Whenever I see a house go down, I think of all the stuff inside that's going.
There's a lot of demolitions going on. But they do have demolition sales and people do kind of take the windows and the fixtures and.
I, I think that it's.
Process is so fast that there's, yeah, that's.
Oh, they destroy really, you know, dream homes.
I have the begin work on future potentials. So I think that that would, that could be begun by establishing a stakeholder meeting with the pertinent people, people from the building industry, people from historic, historic industry that can provide leads to, to get this information out there and to give us the information that we would need to, to establish some future legislation.
Architecture is in stock.
Yeah, and there's a lot of companies in, in northeast that deal in exactly that, you know.
We, we still have the window half rounds downstairs in the auditorium because they were, they were beautiful, absolutely beautiful. They weren't very efficient, but when we replaced them, we salvaged those. So.
I, I have a question. I don't want to open a can of worms, but back when I was little, we could go to the transfer station and recycle ourselves.
That, that was, in the past, that, that was what they used to do. And we, they also do that currently in Southhold. Southhold currently spends about $70,000 in operating expenses over the year to staff and to dispose of things that are dropped off at their recycling area. Because either no one wants it or, or it got damaged. You really, if you want to do it right, you really need to have a housed, roofed facility so that you're not getting these beautiful couches. And if they're not, if they're not taken in a day, they're destroyed. So it, it's a, I would love to do that.
But it's not as easy as it sounds.
No.
Got it.
Okay. So also with legislative to support the New York State Extended Producer Responsibility Product Packaging Initiatives, reduction of styrofoams and plastics. New York State has a lot of initiatives on requiring the manufacturer and producer of these things to recycle them. Hence, how you can bring your thin film plastics back to the supermarket, not just single use plastic bags. As long as they, they provide them, which in our jurisdiction, they don't. But batteries can be brought back to the.
That's the point of sale.
The point of sale. So that's what extended producer responsibility means. Public education and outreach, that's an ongoing effort. Support the private sector efforts and to divert waste from landfills through recycling. Continue public education on the issues of, of the single use plastics. Encourage the voluntary reduction. Educate on the sanitary waste and the effects on our local waterways, fertilizers and pesticides. Educate on green zone and electric lawn care and tie that into waste management because it's huge. Because now that you're using electric, you don't have to put the oil cans in, you're not spilling gas. It, it's huge. Reach out to the 12 school districts to obtain data on their waste management efforts because they're across the board. They, they're their own entities and that's how they've always operated, but that might be a shared service opportunity. Develop, okay, I'm not gonna, I just said that. Organics management, continue to track the progression of the Long Island compost, American recycling, anaerobic digester. So they're, they're planning one in Brookhaven Town that they've been going through regulatory hurdles on, but that would allow for food waste recycling. Been enough, number of pilot projects for food recycling or organics recycling over the past couple of years.
A pyrolysis or depolarization type of technique?
It's an aerobic digester, so it's.
It's a waste of energy?
Uh. I think it, biofuel comes out of it, but it's.
Is it converted? They're creating biofuels out of it. That's, at least that's what they're proposing to do.
They're not online yet, but once they come online, it offers us a greater opportunity to perhaps have.
Feed the machine.
To, to feed the machine and offer that to our constituents because we do get requests.
Is this a municipal project?
No, it's not.
It's a private company?
And it was a Long Island compost and they have another company, I believe it's American Recycling. They were strongly encouraged to do this by the DEC because of their organics composting.
We don't currently take at our transfer station food waste, right?
No, no, we just take vegetative waste, which is another topic that I'm going to get to.
I know it's, handling food waste is challenging.
It's challenging and the education on that is huge too. Because you shouldn't be doing cheese, you shouldn't be doing processed food, that sort of thing.
Even the vegetative composting is, I mean, issue oriented as we're seeing now.
Absolutely. So local governments and partnerships. I have that Cornell Cooperative Extension to develop the water quality improvement projects to deal with the nitrogen and pathogens as waste and wastewater located in the groundwater system. Suffolk County work to generate a list of biosolid haulers, working within the town and work together to obtain quantity and disposal data. DEC to obtain the recycling information that they get through the bottle return program, which we know nothing about. But if you consider that as part of our recycling efforts, that would, that would be a substantial number.
Yeah.
And they don't really track that right now. So commercial institutional sector, reach out to that, those sectors by land use to obtain information on solid waste management, generation, disposal on a voluntary basis. Develop the program to help private industry track and develop their own sustainability plans. And, and one of my thoughts on, on this, given the fact that we just had our sustainability update, is there's so many different avenues of education and outreach that we do need. Is, we have a list of all of those property owners that have, or industrial, commercial, institutional classifications. Maybe come up with questionnaire, simple questionnaire, you know, five questions for solid waste. You know, five questions for energy, just to try and develop a database to see how we can facilitate change going forward, to see trends. Because I think for the most part, people want to do the right thing. And by doing some of the right things with waste management, they can reduce their operating costs as well. It costs more to dispose of non recyclable garbage than it does to recycle. So I, I think it's an opportunity. So that, those are the elements of the implementation plan and every year, we would just work to progress them a little bit more.
Are we seeing increases? I'm imagining we are in yard waste coming into our facilities.
Vegetative waste.
Vegetative waste. Is that true? That we're processing more than we have in the past?
Absolutely. So we have three registered DEC yard waste facilities within town of Southampton. We have West Hampton, we have Hampton Bay's and we have North Sea. The, how a DEC looks at these yard waste facilities is if you take in less than 3,000 cubic yards of yard waste in a year, you're exempt.
In a year?
In a year. If you take, so that's essentially farmers, that sort of thing. If you go between 3,000 and 10,000, you're registered. If you go over 10,000, you're permitted facility. So we've been exceeding the 10,000 cubic yard threshold, namely at, at Hampton Bay's. We're registered at all three facilities currently. And we also get special exception to exceed that threshold during emergency hurricanes and that sort of thing, recovery scenarios. So the DEC had actually invited us to make a decision on the Hampton Bay's transfer station.
Is that actually 10,000 yards?
Invited us to do that.
Is that 10,000 yards total per year or 10,000 on site at any one time?
It, they, it's a little bit ambiguous. So it's very good question. So.
One's a total volume and one is.
I actually have the.
Sitting volumes. It's a big difference.
Well, again, it has an overhead. It comes in and out.
I thought we were allowed up to 10,000 yards on site.
It's not at any one time, time.
It's not time.
Comp, okay. I have this and I can read it to you, but it.
We've had these discussions.
It's actually, my question really is kind of, is not, is not that. So the reason why I was asking about increases in yard waste is because yard waste has been in the news a lot with the issues, you know, groundwater contamination and manganese and. the issues of, you know, groundwater contamination and manganese and all kinds of things, radionuquidides. And I, I know the DEC was talking about increasing some of their regs in terms of these organic processing sites. And I'm just kind of wondering, are we managing our site in a way to mitigate any possible groundwater impacts at those sites?
Well, he, here's, here's the difference between a registered facility and a permitted facility. There's a lot more plans that are required to be developed in place for a permitted facility as opposed to a registered. They would like to see groundwater monitoring wells to be able to, to see what's going on. They have different requirements for your base if you have highly permeable soils or if you don't. They need you to have a detailed, so here's a few of the permit requirements. Detailed description of the source quality and quantity of waste, the design and operation plan for where you're gonna be storing it and how are you gonna be treating it, odor control and response plan, compost maturity and distribution plan, surface and subsurface soil characteristics for the drainage, monitoring wells, and stormwater management for detention and infiltration so that you're not, you know, you're distributing it, not concentrating it. So they've, they've asked, they've told us that we can either reduce the quantity that we have at Hampton Bays to lower than 10,000 or apply for a permitted facility later than November 4th of this year. So I'm gonna be asking for pricing from professional design, professional services to, to get us to application with your approval.
Can I ask you a question? Just like they do with dredge spoils when they water them before they put them out and stuff.
Or de-water.
De-water, sorry. De-water them. Is there a way to do that in some fashion with vegetative waste before it gets put into, or it goes composting?
Well, vegetative waste is, we break it out into brush and leaves, right? So the brush gets chipped and it's, it's wood waste. It's not.
But sometimes it's treated or sometimes, like, we don't know.
We, we don't take, no, no, we, it could be sprayed, but we don't take treated wood or.
I mean, like, spray, just backyard, just sprayed.
Yeah. That's just, that, the wood waste just gets chipped and if someone wants it, they can take it right now.
But is there, what I'm asking, is there a way to, like, we do with a dredge, like, is there a, is there a way to cleanse it in any way before it goes to the?
Dredge spoils are a totally different scenario because you, you take, you take soil samples and test it before they even allow you to, where to store it and how, what happens.
Well, they contain the water because they're being dredged. So when you de-water, you're taking, you're taking the water that came up with the spoils and then you're allowing that wa, that water to return.
And I'm not talking about using a similar method because the methodology wouldn't, you know, transfer to, to the brush, but I'm just saying, is there another methodology that would?
Oh, to accelerate the leachate from that?
Yeah.
To do clean.
To cleanse it, yeah, like, in the same.
Mostly it's organic, mostly contains.
You could work on concrete slab, you could do liners, you could do certain things. You could do catch basins.
Well, we would have.
Sheet flowing, yeah. I mean, we're gonna have to permit regardless if we're gonna take in 10,000 more.
Up our game in terms of.
I mean, generally, Christine, when you start chopping stuff up and get it smaller, 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 it, it becomes more of a problem.
Yeah.
So it has to be controlled that way.
Not, not necessarily in regards to stormwater aspects.
No, 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 I meant just the, the ability for it to leach when you.
Okay.
So we're gonna have to have test wells. We're gonna have to make a decision about whether to reduce our, the amount coming in or get permitted.
And, and my recommendation would be to get permitted. The DEC over the.
Then we'll be able to go more than 10,000, right?
You would be, but you'd be, well, you'd be restricted by your land size.
We're at capacity.
Because we currently use the Hampton Bays Jackson Avenue facility. So if you go to the transfer station on the west side of the transfer station, that's where we have the residential drop-off. Behind that berm, there's a whole nother field that we have windrows for the leaf composting and then actually north of that, there's another area that we've been using. So we could probably go up to 15,000 cubic yards or, or that sort of quantity, but we really need to get a operational plan in compliance with.
You better have numbers for us.
I don't have them yet.
We'll get them.
I will get them, but.
You're gonna propose to have us hire somebody to get that permit for us?
I, I would like to request your permission to go forward with a request for proposals to develop that plan.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see where we have much choice.
I, we have had correspondence from the DEC prior to my hire in 2011, just letting us know that we've exceeded that threshold in the past so that we need to market and get rid of this stuff in a more timely fashion.
Is that the only place or is, or is North Sea an issue or hovering on an issue?
Well, North, they always hover on the issue, but Hampton Bays has been the most problematic in maintaining that 10,000.
May I ask this? Once you go from registered to permitted, that's what the jump up, is there more oversight?
Without a doubt, without a doubt.
Yeah, it affects budget and it affects the ancillary costs to, to make that happen.
When, we have our four transfer stations. They require that operational oversight. The, we answer to the DEC on a regular basis to those sites in terms of our annual inspections, our annual reports. The Part 360 for Waste Management has just gotten more protective in light of recent incidents throughout Long Island in terms of contamination issues.
And because we're a municipality, the DEC can enter our site at any time they want. We, in fact, invite them. We're very open about that.
Absolutely.
That does, that is in contrast with some of the private sites where the DEC is not necessarily allowed access.
And we want to see the water quality monitoring. I think that's important.
This is a huge issue. We, we have a lot of vegetative waste. I mean, we, I think everybody on this table and everybody watching knows that composting facilities, whether it's permitted, exempt, or what, what's the other?
It's exempt, registered, or permitted.
Registered, right. That they're, they're operating. Are there other permits that are necessary for a registered operation of, of composting, other than a DEC registration?
No.
Okay.
What was town?
For the, I'm sorry.
We're self-regarded.
Yeah.
Under, under.
They want to do it as a private, I think it's an accessory use if it's under a certain amount for landscapers, but it can't be a primary use, I believe.
Well, by the town or, they'd have to get.
All of our sites in the town.
You mean the private sites?
I'm sorry, all of Southampton Town's composting facilities.
You mean the.
Our, or, or our sites.
Yeah, because I mean, we're, I think we're close to the registered.
That's what I was asking, hovering.
We're, we're pretty close. And every time we have a hurricane, those are our receiving sites and while DEC can give you authorization to exceed.
And this has actually been discussed.
It's difficult to get that stuff off the site.
We need to know what some of the.
Yeah. We've discussed this on the Sandy Task Force, this issue of working with municipalities for debris management. This is, this is a big issue.
But this is, we're taking in town brushing waste. Like, I, I just want to balance, like, you know, under the theory, if you build it, they will come. I don't want to, like, overdo it and then invite people who are taking it elsewhere to come here now.
So, so I'm proposing in the operational budget to increase the cost for estate care and landscapers to bring their vegetative waste into the transfer station, our sites, just to try and mitigate the quantity that we're having. But I don't think it's gonna help to the point where we, we're in compliance with that 10,000. So.
What do we charge them?
We charge resident, off amnesty times, we charge residents either $5 or $15, depending on the size and material that they bring in, volume.
Are you on?
No, it's like, if, if it's less than a cubic foot, it's five. If it's like a truck, it's 15. But if you're real, an estate care or a landscaper, it's either $50 or $75 on how you bring it in. I'd like to go higher with that because I think that we haven't touched those prices in a, in a number of years, one. And two, they're not realistic with what's coming in.
Yeah, I think we can look at that. Just let's be careful because if we get too pricey, you know, we're gonna end up with more dumping in the woods and that, then you end up with a lot of, you end up with a lot of rodents and get a lot of issues.
But to, to Councilor Skidvoney's point, is it the cost associated with changing the status of the Hampton Bays transfer station to meet the DEC requirement? We're over the 10,000. Is that scalable to the, to our other transfer sites? Would that be scalable to do that for us? If we looked at it and we go times three as opposed to?
It would likely be.
Okay.
Because all of our, our sites are pretty level and, you know, we've got land area.
So to your point, can we be able to phase that in knowing that those costs unless, you know, it goes out too far, but that we would have a handle on how to do that?
I can ask in the RFP for, you know, we may consider in the future adding West Hampton and North Sea.
I'm just seeing, is it more cost-effective to do it, you know, take the hit and do that? Because we do have issues. We have serious issues that this directly impacted on.
We also, just to go to water quality monitoring, we do the water, post-closure monitoring
of our North Sea landfill on a biannual basis. So we go out and we test the.
And there may be funding sources outside of.
Can we use any of the, I mean, if this is going to.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get a handle on, to understand what the, you know, because it is a water quality issue.
But if we can go beyond the operating aspect of it?
I doubt that we can.
Yeah. We, part of the, you know, amendment to the law was to deal with, with contamination, but this isn't, it's really, I'm not sure.
Bordering on operating.
Yeah.
Maybe, we could look at that.
We've had test result, we, we went through a testing process of our compost subsoils in the past to test for contaminants and they tested very well, actually. So.
Yeah. And I think that leads it, but just, so we stay there just for one second because this is a concern to me. So if we, if we do that, and again, this is part of the state that's causing us to do something which we should do, there's no doubt about that. Have we thoroughly explored what the state is able to help us with in those terms or even the EPA? Because a lot of this comes down from that as well. Does that come out of that super fund, you know, that's sitting in the state? There's, there's a lot of money there. Is that?
I don't think that that would be applicable to, to this, but I can certainly.
Yeah, I think we should check because, you know, it is a priority of the governors in the state of New York and, you know, if, to the extent that we can be helped to do the right thing, I'd like to explore that.
The DEC has been very helpful in terms of promoting opportunities for grants associated with the Part 360 updates where it pertains to stop days, where it pertains to equipment. But they also have gotten a lot more restrictive on equipment. So we used to be able to purchase waste trailers, hauling trailers that if they were used at least 50% of the time for recycling, they would pay for it, essentially. Now they have to be used 100% of the time for, for recycling, which doesn't work operationally because when you have, you just drop and pick up different trailers as they need to go. If you have an empty commingled trailer and you come back to North Sea and your next load is a waste trailer, you're gonna put that empty commingled trailer in that slot and then bring that waste trailer out. So that trailer is no longer 100% dedicated to recycling. And to change that would require a lot more trailers than we physically need. So it's, but I haven't seen any of the DEC grant opportunities pertaining to capital improvements for yard waste, but I'll be sure to reach out to our local contact on that.
I don't know how to, what to call it either. I don't know where it actually falls, that's why.
One, one, one or two last points on the yard waste thing, then I do want to change a different.
I'm sorry, it's a candy wrapper, but.
That was a little scleris, Steve Hellstone. So, and then, but that, so just last on this waste, on the yard waste, then I want to ask you about another waste stream. But are we now, I mean, we're bringing, we're having all this vegetative waste come in. Some of it's wood chips, some of it turns into compost. It seems like, you know, wood chips are something that possibly could be used maybe in these permeable reactive barriers or in these, you know, some of these newer septic designs. Is that something that you're looking into?
Why, yes, I am. So excited that you said that.
Well, and I also want to ask you about the composting too. So, but go, let's on the wood chips first.
So the town has a $650,000 grant that we've been working with the EC and Cornell Cooperative Extension on the installation of a 200-foot PRB project at Iron Point.
So just so for our audience, hopefully, the people watching.
Yes, that's in Flanders. It's permeable reactive barrier.
Yeah, perme, which is what?
It's essentially a carbon-based media granular mix, which it's a, placed in a wall-type structure that you'll never see because it's on the ground. So this huge trencher comes out, trenches out, let's say, a one-foot swath through the earth and then it's backfilled with this carbon-based.
One foot wide, but very deep.
Very deep. It has to intercept the groundwater. And the thought is, and the, the science behind it is.
It goes well below the groundwater, goes deep into.
Well, it's, it's based on the groundwater testing that's done because you need to put a monitoring well above, upgrading it and downgrading.
The ground water moves to the surface waters, to the bays and harbors. So it's, there's like a river on the ground.
Yes.
And as that river moves toward the bays and harbors, and that river has nitrogen in it from fertilizers and residential septic systems, it will go through this filter, which is this trench that goes deep.
Well, it's a converter, it's not.
Well, hold on, let me just, and as it pushes through, the wood chips in it, right, will use, bacteria on that wood chips will use that organic material to convert the, the nitrogen from the water into a gaseous nitrogen.
Yep.
And, and keep it from getting into the bays and harbors. That's the theory.
That's, that's the theory.
And it works in theory.
And we're, we're also working on, with Cornell to get that pilot program established in the Reeves Bay watershed to intercept a stormwater discharge.
Did we do the one at Iron Point Park yet?
That's the one I just talked about. So that's still in process.
So to build it, you need a lot of wood chips, right?
We need a lot of wood chips and I'm so excited about the opportunity to use these because it's a beneficial reuse option of a waste.
And I'll give credit to Councilor Lobstad for having come up with that point a long time ago.
Long time ago.
Long time ago. So here it's coming to.
In the legion tip, because we have a lot of wood chips, because you had pointed out.
Southern pine beetle.
The pine beetle.
Well, we're gonna have a lot more with the southern pine beetle and oak wilt, which is starting.
Another problem?
It's another problem that's gonna cause a lot of, of wood waste. So, so I've spoken at Cornell. I've also spoken to Frank Russo, who's working at the Clean Water Technology Institute, to tell him we would be, we would be very excited to be part of this effort and I think that it's a wonderful reuse of a waste. It's a wonderful opportunity.
Seeing that it's coming.
How far down into the water table do you need to go?
It's based on the design. So it's really based on the groundwater modeling that they do based on the water testing. So they'll put in a monitoring well and see where that zone of, of high concentration is. So they want to make sure that they put that wall within that section so that as it goes through, when it comes up, you're gonna intercept it and not be too short or.
Where does it run in the water column? Does the nitrogen, is it not spread throughout or is it more concentrated toward the top?
It depends on the watershed and the characteristics in the ground. So if you have more porous parts or less porous parts, you have to know. And usually it's a funnel. Usually it's like a plume within a plume. So to know that by water testing, you can find areas of higher concentration. It doesn't mean that everything else is less.
And when they put those.
Once we put one of these things, they will know if they work or not.
They, and they'll, they have testing on it. They're gonna actually have testing in the water body at the.
There's data from.
Is that an area where there's a fair amount of nitrogen in the?
The Reeves Bay.
No, but in the water coming in?
Well, that's part of the.
Coming in from the water table? Is it people putting fertilizers on their lawns, which is running directly into Reeves Bay or is it the oil pipe from the Riverhead sewage treatment plant? And what is?
Well, this, this is gonna help us figure that out because we're gonna have the upgrading testing and the down.
In, around Iron Point Park and said, oh, this is an area where there's a decent amount of nitrogen in the water, right?
They, they didn't do that before they decided that as the pilot program. So they're, they do the upgranted to establish that baseline.
But they do have that.
Phase one.
They do have that. So it does have increased levels of nitrogen.
Right. So they have something they can measure before and after.
But that baseline is, is never consistent. So when you go to, it's one of the issues that we have with septic systems, testing those right now, that if you test them at the wrong time, if you test them during times of hot, you know, water tables go up and down, if you have a high rain or storm runoff, things like that, you have to consider those things. You know, so you, you need a, you know, you don't need a point in time. You need several tests over a period of time to get a consistent baseline. to get a consistent baseline.
What's the timeframe of that to happen?
On your point, they're in the, we're in the modeling stage right now. No, I'm hoping to get that PRB actually in before the end of this year.
Okay, because CPI is also, no, I know, because CPI is also going to be doing a PRB and we need, I mean, this was started a long time ago.
Well, I really want to clarify though, because the PRB is a well-understood technology, you know, it's been in other places. There's a lot of data from Canadian installations and Florida that have done that. It's had sort of mixed depending on the watersheds. You know, that's where the issues have, but it's, you know, it's a very straightforward technology.
So it's experimental relative to the watersheds?
We want, it's not so much, we want to characterize what that, what this watershed does. That's the purpose of the Cornell, the implementation of the PRB. It's not.
It's not to do the PRB, it's to do what?
The long-term study.
The long-term study, yeah.
And they've been using.
It's just one tool, it'll.
And a lot of tools will be.
Well, and just so you know.
It's an expensive way to approach the problem, but.
Well, yeah.
But it might, it might be effective in bulkhead replacements if we.
Hampton Hills just did that in conjunction with Cornell in Hampton Bays. They did a small part, they were replacing their bulkhead and put a PRB in and took readings, monitored it and said it worked great, and they're looking to do a longer piece.
Instead of doing a sand backfill, they do the chips?
I don't know if they use wood chips, but they did a PRB.
It's generally a mix of, of the wood chips and a granule, if you will. But they've been using these reactive barriers for a number of years. They've, they've used them at old Air Force bases to mitigate solvents and fuel spills, so.
It actually used to be one of the things, the buckets that you would put into old outhouses.
Last yard waste piece is the carbon-based.
The compost is more what DEC is concerned about in terms of our quantity on site.
It just seems like we have a lot of compost, which, which is good in general, other than we're concerned about groundwater impacts. But are we now screening it?
Where?
So that we have a product that is, we can actually sell? I know we've been giving it away.
Thank you very much for authorizing a new hire of a construction equipment operator in waste management a little while ago, because that has helped. However, we had some recent changes and now we're short in HEO because someone transferred. So we have been screening it, I am.
It was my observation that there's companies that do this, right? That they seem to be viable economic businesses that sell compost. And they have the same thing we do, but the only difference is that we were giving ours away and ours was a lower quality product because it wasn't screened.
Correct.
And so that's kind of why we're giving it away. And if perhaps we screened it, we'd actually have a sellable commodity that could help us support this enterprise zone.
Absolutely, and, and we've been working towards that end. I'd like to try and get rid of some of the product that we currently have on site. We will need that if we're doing a capital improvement at the Hampton Bays site because you need to empty the windrows out of it so that you could create this.
So what's stopping us from selling the product that we have?
We are.
Oh, you are selling it?
Yeah.
Are people willing to pay?
They, they are, actually Martyrs is taking material out of either Hampton Bays or North Sea this week, but it's not even composted yet, it's just leaves. Because sometimes they use that for habitat restoration.
The downside and the careful side.
But we have been selling.
It's moderate, is making sure that what goes in, you know, doesn't affect what goes out. And that's not as easy as it sounds.
So, but we're charging both directions, now we're charging for what comes in sometimes. And then we're processing it and then we're charging for what goes out. We weren't charging for what goes out in the past, but we are now.
When, when we were trying to get our quantity on site under control, we would waive the fees. Okay, so, so that we could get, empty out the sites. So I'd like to keep the fees low right now so that we can get the material off of the site. And then once we were ready to move the prices up, and Ed's been doing a good job of looking at what the market is accepting in terms of prices on this, just since you're talking about.
Think of what we do as a business, the way a business would approach the issue.
And just to go to your point on charging for what comes in as opposed to what goes out. We don't charge for residential self haulers to bring their leaves into the transfer stations, and that's year-round. We charge for brush, we have two six-week amnesties for brush that's in the spring and the fall. And I've gotten a lot of, not a lot, I've gotten a percentage of people that are not happy with that. And it's generally the commercial carters that aren't happy necessarily with our windows for that amnesty. Unfortunately, the weather changes when the leaves drop. But we need to make our amnesties, you know, at the time that we're doing our budget. So it's in our fee schedule one and two with the, on a regular basis so that we can schedule vacations.
It's a voucher program.
Because you need a heavy support of, heavy equipment operators when we're getting, during that time because we're getting so much leaves that we have to push up and bring it to the back section to keep up with the inflow.
But some of our residents will, will allow the, the commercial landscaper to use that amnesty period of time to put stuff in or not.
That, that's a different, if, if it's a.
I want to make this clear.
Okay, so if, there's two different programs. There's our amnesty, which usually coincides with the highway department leaf voucher program. So the leaf voucher program is if, instead of putting your leaves at the street, you can go to the highway department and get a voucher for your landscape provider to bring that material to the transfer stations. So that material gets dumped off in the residential drop-off area because we don't want people going in the back area where we have our windrows because we get illegal dumping. You know, sometimes it's soft soils, they could, they could sink. So it's a little bit more moving around for us for those big quantities. But that's, that's how that works and it's, it's the highway voucher program.
In the public's, there's understanding that these are very.
So if I could just, and I know you have more to talk about and we're getting behind schedule.
No, I'm good.
Okay, the last thing I want to talk about then is, is the other part of the waste stream, the MSW, the non-recyclables. I know we're seeing this increase in yard waste, but, you know, it seems to me that more and more people are opting to use private carters, there's so many of these carters out there. And less people are using our transfer station for non-recyclables. And I haven't seen the numbers, but do you have the green bag sales like this year versus last year? So I can get a sense of, you know, how much volume of MSW is going through our facility?
I have, I can get that to you because I have the, the tipping, the material that we've brought to our disposal facility. The green bag sales typically lags and we're on the bell curve. So I don't want to give you what we have right now because I think we're a little bit behind on it.
Do you have the tipping numbers?
I do, but I can't, I don't have them with me right now, I can get them to you.
Are we seeing a drop?
You know, over the past eight years, it's fluctuated. I think that it is, does have a very slight downtrend amongst a lot of the streams.
You know, one of the things I've, you know, like people have the right to use contractors, it is convenient. You know, our program, you know, we charge you based on the volume you produce, which is, which I like, you know, through the green bags and, but we do have sort of a, to recycle, it's, I don't know if onerous is the right word, but it, it does take a lot of work. So we have all these different categories, you have to have some multiple containers that you have to put in the back of your car. Sometimes things could spill and, I, I know I had brought up, you know, a couple of years ago that Brookhaven had set up a single-stream facility and it was a pretty good rate they were offering us to take that material and, but we still wanted to kind of look at keeping these various categories and, and try to market each of those commodities, you know, be it cardboard and paper or things like that. So I'm just kind of wondering where we are now in that, should we look at making the process easier to maybe attract more people and?
I think that it would, I think it would make things easier for the people. I think that there's been issues with the single-stream recycling in terms that they're getting a lot of waste within that single-stream recycling stream so that it's not as effective, if you will. We, when we talked about that a few years ago, we were paying Tana Brookhaven $25 for our co-mingled containers. That's $25 a ton.
Were you paying them or they were giving us?
We were paying them for co-mingled containers, that's plastic, glass and metal. Glass is very difficult to recycling, there's, there's really not a lot of market on it. But it, so at that point, we went through that process of financial review of it and we were making far more money in the separate stream recycling than we would by going to single-stream. And I believe that their offering to municipalities to participate in single-stream had reduced whereas they were offering us $15 a ton. It actually came down over, over the past couple of years. Just to, to tell you where we are right now.
They originally offered us like $20 or $25 a ton for the single-stream.
I think that that was the price that they were going to get and they would give us 15, I believe. It was a part of it. So, so I think that that's what Brookhaven was getting for it and then Brookhaven would give us 15 for it. So this year, we actually got $12.5 more a ton for our paper and cardboard than we had previously gotten by bringing it to a different facility in Babylon. So it actually, it's a little bit further, but it's a lot less time in terms of the waiting around because that facility that we had been bringing it to was getting a little jammed up.
Well, I sort of understand the economics here and it is a lot of work and a little bit more transportation to try to, you know, find the best prices for each of these various things. But if you look at the whole picture, it may turn out that if you went to a simplified method of recycling, like single-stream, that although we might get less money than, you know, when you add up what we're paying to get rid of and what we're getting paid to get rid of, we, the volume may increase. And so we might end up ahead because there's just more of this material that we're getting paid on average $15 a ton. Because people might say, you know what, I'm going to use that facility now and I'm going to recycle more, right? And if we make it easier so they don't have to slop all these different containers and bags in just one container, okay, here's my recyclables, here's my non-recyclables, and off they go. And we could even look at possibly picking up the single-stream from people. It might make sense in certain areas because they're basically handing us money, $15 a ton of materials.
But we're, we're getting paid $42 a ton for our paper and upwards of $72 a ton for our cardboard.
I understand, and when you combine it in, but we're, but we're paying for those other things. So we're getting 72 for one, but we're paying whatever, $30.
We're only paying $21 now for our co-mingled that's going to Ice Slip. When we decided not to go to single-stream with Brookhaven, the price that they said that they would charge us for the co-mingled containers went up to $45 a ton, that's why we went to Ice Slip.
We switched, I know, that made the numbers work, but I think this is kind of something we're going to have to continually revisit.
Okay.
And look at this because I think if we made our system easier, a lot more people would take advantage of it. We'd see those numbers increase and we'd see people using those transfer stations again.
If, if the prices stayed consistent, but what I'm seeing is that you have these spikes, it's a commodity and sometimes the prices are really attractive to us and make sense and might justify it for that moment. But then the aggregate of that, it, it seems to.
And that's what we talked about last time, it was too unpredictable.
And if you wanted, if you wanted.
We have certain costs that aren't going away no matter what we do. There's operational costs that maintain the facilities and the staff, paying the electric bills, et cetera.
I think the calculation still keeps us.
If we're losing volume, I think we have to start thinking about that. The numbers may start to shift in favor of single-stream.
I'll send the spreadsheet because I track it over the year of what we're taking in over, I think I had it since 2011.
Tonnage and price.
The tonnage I have in that spreadsheet, the, the prices I don't have because they, they sometimes fluctuate.
To market price.
But if we do change to single-stream, it would be a suggestion to not go with the enterprise accounting model for waste management.
I think it's worth looking at, we keep talking about doing that and seeing, but I, you know, I'm also seeing these spikes and valleys and, and I think the supervisors, right, when, to the extent that you look at what those costs are, you know, what, how they impact us, you know, and what the goals are, it's certainly worth.
What's into our model is a lot of unpaid labor, basically. We're basically the consumer, the resident, is doing a lot of work. They're separating out all these things and they're not being compensated for that. What, but we're taking advantage of it because we've got now these relatively clean streams that some we can sell, some we can't sell. Let me just finish, so by making it easier, I think we're doing a service to our residents by saying, okay, we're going to make it as easy as possible for you, maybe we won't end up with quite as much. I think we will because the volume is going to increase to make up for that difference. But I think our recycling rates will go through the roof. We're going to, and that's a good thing for the planet.
But at the other end of the stream, the, the efficiency is, is not what you would expect it to be. It, it's hovering, you know, 50 to 60%, and there's, there's the issue. So at some places are very good at that because they made the investment to make those, make that recycling effort, you know, and when it approaches 70, 75%, it's, it is efficient, but we're not there here.
I think Brookhaven's facility is pretty good, I think they're doing like nine different types of plastics that they're recycling now.
And they can, they can separate, they're, they're super efficient with separating it out into the different commodities. But the efficiency that I think John is referring to is the incoming waste. If, if I get a big shaver and I partially rip off the plastic from the cardboard but leave it together and throw it in there, it's not going to go through the system right. If I, if I think my garden hose is recyclable and throw it in there, it's not only not recyclable, one, but it causes hours of downtime because it gets stuck in the gears. It's, right, so I think it's a big conversation.
I'm just throwing it out there, I'm going to keep throwing it out there because I think it is the future. Sorry about the throwing it out because it's, it wasn't meant as a garbage reference. But I, I think that we, you know, we, this is the future, this is the direction things are going. We have a neighboring community that has a facility that we can take advantage of. I think it's the right thing to do and I just ask you to continue to look at it.
Okay.
The Solid Waste Advisory Group does keep looking at it, and Christine in particular does keep looking at it and has, you know, has tracked this really well. I, I think where, where we, where we end up with success is when, when somebody makes that investment. We have this cope, the problems with manufactured products that are half cardboard, half plastic, half metal, trying to separate those things, and they still make up a large volume.
Or they're contaminated when they get into the stream.
And then trying to get manufacturers to, you know, change their practices in packaging. That's really where you see success, I think, nationally, you know, when that happens. And we're, we're on the edge, I mean, sometimes it does and sometimes it doesn't, but we're right there.
Has Brookhaven Town's prices changed significantly? I know in conversations with supervisor remain, they're, they're heavily dependent on exporting plastics and I know that has changed recently, so.
And, and I haven't reached out to them this year because they were on a downward trend over the last time that we've spoken to. But the metals are, are not as big a component of the co-mingled fraction, if, if you will, as you would think.
You don't have to buy as many cans anymore.
Yeah, because people like to put the tops back on.
We'll see what the numbers are.
I'll, I'll send that spreadsheet that I have of the trending quantities when I get back to the.
You know, and now the DEC is trying to get us, I know this is, you're going to be bringing us more on this. They want us to, you know, figure out how much waste is being produced in our community and what's happening to it, what, how much is being recycled. This is an unfunded mandate, I don't know how we're supposed to do this. I know we're, we're going to talk about licensing all the contractors, all the carting companies, right? And they're going to have to provide us with the data, which is a lot of work on our.
It's, it's a lot of work on our end, we don't have any ability to validate. Getting information from private carters is a little bit tricky because you can't ask too much because then you're meddling in their business model.
And you know, the carters that work in Brookhaven and Southampton and East Hampton, they're picking up and they're going to have to figure out where the origin.
And the developers are saying they're going to be double work, double paperwork, it's all, you know.
Right, I mean, they're, but they're actually sort of.
I have a Carter and they tell me they recycle, I don't know that they actually do. So they say, put it all into one container, we take it out at our facility. That's what they're telling me.
And that's the technology that impacts that because some technologies are really good at it and some, is it? And some doesn't happen at all.
I'm not sure if they're just telling me that, they're not going to say their name. But I'm not sure whether they're just saying it to make me feel better or they're actually doing it.
A lot of the operators, a lot of the, no, the haulers are not, transfer stations are. So residential. So, residential, waste is supposed to be sourced separated, right? So, that means you're supposed to separate out your recycling and your non-recyclables. It's not on commercials, though, yet.
Because their equipment doesn't allow for that.
But once it gets picked up, a lot of the haulers say that the transfer station does the recycling. And when you go to the transfer station, it's recycled by a picking line or through mechanical methods or a sophisticated sorting system. Still a lot of labor-intensive picking. If you do the picking at the transfer station, you lose a lot of opportunity for the recycling because it gets commingled with everything else and contaminated. So, it's like a catch-22 on that part. And when we went through the process of talking to the carters for the permit and track program, that was one of their resounding requests, was to be able to use the town transfer stations for recycling purposes, which is not allowable currently under our solid waste management program because we're in the residential areas.
If somehow we could have a single stream somewhere, you know, so that they could pick up two containers, right, so they could send a separate truck, and then bring us the material, which we then will get fifteen dollars a ton for, it could be a windfall for the town.
There's a couple of options for the town board to consider. You get the greatest deal on waste disposal, recycling, and cost efficiency amongst town operations to go to garbage districts. That's a problem on another level, though, because you have the tendency, unless you have a long-term contract, of it going up over the years. We also have the problem of private roads, and that contributes heavily to that problem. But that's the best way to get a handle on what's going outside of the town in terms of waste. And then you can predict on that, or you can specify on that, how your recycling is gonna be handled, albeit the contractor has the right to market the recyclables, or it goes to Brookhaven and town gets that fee, and it helps offset the tax district, if you will. So, I think that's part of a bigger conversation, but that was part of this...
The original...
Yeah, we haven't been able to figure this one out. Obviously, people would love to have their garbage picked up as long as they weren't paying more than they're currently paying for their Carter.
And it's also the same argument that you can make with septic systems that are, will continue to improve, that are approved by the county, that we install, but we know that technologies are coming, and how far do you invest in that until you get to a point where you, you know, you're approaching zero output or, you know, a hundred percent mitigation? You know, that's kind of, we're in the same sort of situation because the technologies that are coming to serve that are there, but it's a double-edged sword because you also have manufacturers that just use so much plastics and other material.
This has sort of kind of evolved on its own, you know, the way our garbage is handled now. We used to bring it, it used to all go to a town facility, a landfill, and now it's, maybe a tenth of it goes to our transfer station, and the rest of it is independent carters. And on a given street, you might have five or six companies that have accounts on that street, so instead of the efficiency of one truck going down, you know, twice a week, picking up house after house, you have different companies on different days with different schedules. It's not a very efficient way to handle our waste.
But you also have the issue of seasonal residents and the ability to leave the container out on the road for the week after it's been picked up, so...
So, the free market has kind of solved this problem, but not necessarily in the best way.
Well, no, and I keep stressing, and I'll continue to stress it. The biggest issue here is the packaging of the things that we consume because a large amount of what we throw out is the packaging of it. And, you know, many other countries have done a very good job at reducing that or making it consistent, not having a mixture of cardboards and plastics and other materials that need to be separated, or otherwise it's not a recyclable material.
Right, so we're gonna, thank you, Christine.
Recycling our collection.
That's right. Lots of candles.
So, what a waste.
No candles.
All right, no more funs. All right, so we're gonna move on to neighborhood access issues. Tom Neely is here. We have a few other people who are going to stream in. So, sorry, we are running a little bit behind schedule.
I do have a large map we can put up on the wall, but I have handouts, and maybe if it's kind of a small group, we'll just do some handouts.
Jane Cerami. Jane.
Jane.
Cerami.
Cerami?
Yeah.
All right, so Jane Cerami and Elaine Botman, and Kathleen Murray from our attorney's office, and Tom Neely, our director of intermodal transportation and traffic safety, and James Ding, resident of...
I'm a resident of this town.
No, I'm not a resident of the community, their community.
I'm a resident and also representing Joseph Deppen.
Okay. James, what's... What's the connection, James, to this issue?
Well, we're here working together as a team.
Okay.
We've been working on this for a while.
Okay. You have friends in the neighborhood or something?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right. Just trying to understand who's at the table.
Well, then we have stakeholders.
Okay, so Tom, do you, where, I don't have a forum, so don't say anything yet.
Christine's there.
Oh, Christine is here. Okay. You know, let's just hold off one second because I think John and Tommy John are gonna be here in a second, and I don't want to start without them. Tommy John is here. I know John is familiar with this issue, so why don't we get started, and I'm sure John will be here in a moment, so. Christine, are you around, or?
I am around. I have a little unatored.
Okay, yeah, gotcha.
Maybe just as a point of order, since the town clerk is not here, when we're done, if you'll give me back these documents, and I'll make sure she gets an official copy logged in for us and get yours stamped as copies, we can get them back to you.
Okay. All right, Tom, do you want to introduce this?
Sure. There has been some discussion over the last couple of years in a meeting with some residents of the Greenfield Road neighborhood off of County Road 39, which encompasses several streets, St. Andrews Road West, Arbittus, Shinnacock Hills Road, and what kind of we call the Greenfield Road neighborhood. There have been some discussions in the past and more recently about the possibility of connecting, creating a second access to this area, and you'll see on your map there marked as option one and option two. One would be the possibility of extending Hillside Road down to Hill Station Road. The other possibility would be creating what's currently a paper road, Shinnacock Hills Road Extension.
Can I just pause for one second? So, there's roughly what, ninety-five, a hundred homeowners in this neighborhood?
Correct.
And right now, the only way to enter and exit this community is from County Road 39, primarily along Greenfield. We did do a little road realignment in that to make it slightly safer, but it's, the left to head west is extremely dangerous if you're exiting. So, they end up making a right because they can't make the left and trying to find the nearest place to turn around, which could be a half mile, a mile down the road, right? So, the residents of this community are sort of fearing for their lives as the volumes of traffic on County Road 39 have increased and the visibility at this point to try to get across and make that left. You can see it's kind of the road, you know, turns. So, they have come just basically seeing if the town can help. They want to know, is there a way to get possibly a one-way, a one-way street leaving this community onto Hill Station Road? Because from Hill Station Road, they would have the options of going to, what, is it Longview?
You could either take Longview, or you could go down to Montauk Highway.
Or you could go down to Montauk Highway. So, they'd have safe ways to exit their community. The only entry point would be the same. The entry point would be the same because that would be a one-way street.
Right. The discussions have been to create this as a one-way street.
And the reason for the one-way concept is they're concerned that this, like many other neighborhoods, would become a bypass of people avoiding County Road 39, who would then go through the neighborhood, and it would radically change their neighborhood. So, by making it one-way, it will avoid that problem and really only be used by the residents of the community of the neighborhood. So, Tom has developed two options, Hillside and this other paper road, which I think has a name or doesn't have a name.
Shinnacock Hills Road Extension is what it's currently called. We have some legal information on that that Kathleen will want to show.
Which is that? I'm just trying to understand what you're calling the yellow one.
Option two is Shinnacock Hills Road. Option one, which is Hillside, maybe I'll talk about that for just a moment.
So, anyway, so I asked this to be a work session because I felt this was really a valid public safety concern that should be, you know, vetted by the board. I don't know what the answer is, and there's a lot of different questions that I'm sure will be asked, but I wanted to have sort of a board conversation about it. And I know some of the residents may have met with other board members, had meetings besides with me, so.
Right.
All right, Tom, go ahead.
Just as a little bit of background, Hillside Road, which is there under the option one label, the first portion of that is a private road, and it's a little closer of your second map there. It just shows it a little more close-up, and I do have some street-level pictures.
And just on that, so the other roads in this neighborhood are primarily town roads.
Right.
Hillside, if you go into this neighborhood, you'll see how different it looks because it's not maintained to the same standards as the other roads, which are in the town highway system. Hillside is sort of broken up a little bit, patched up a little. It's more narrow than the other roads and not part of the town highway system.
Part of St. Andrews Road West is also private, but Arbittus and Shinnacock Hills Road and Greenfield are, and Hilltop are town roads.
For clarity, St. Andrews Hills Road West does not go through all the way. Is that correct? I mean, I see the right-of-way does, but the road actually doesn't.
I've been told it is passable, but it is private, so that's one of the topics that I think we would have to talk about as we explore this, is that if one of these options were to go forward with town support, I think making sure that that area is also able to access that possible road is something else we have to make sure.
Okay. And before we move off the Hillside Road area, I think you're doing an overview, but we're moving fast here. Have the neighbors approached the homeowners on this private road to ask them if they were interested in going into some kind of agreement?
Yeah, no, they're not for it.
And they are not interested?
There are, right. In 2010, one of the residents of Hillside approached the town about improving Hillside under Town Law 200.
So, let me understand, option one is not preferable to the neighborhood?
Well, to the people on Hillside.
On Hillside, okay. And then when we get to option two, we'll talk about it.
They'd have to be approached again.
Right. As there have been conversations, some people have expressed that they are not supportive of this idea. In 2010, resident did approach the town about the possibility of having Hillside become a town road through the Town Law 200 process, which is, I think we all know, the residents on the street, fifty-one percent of them have to agree to it. They have to approve it to town standards, and then the town takes it into the system.
So, there are...
We were approached, we provided, the resident that was kind of leading the effort at the time with the pricing information, what it would cost in terms of each property owner. We never heard back, so that process never went forward.
I think it's fair to assume that at least some people on Hillside, which is now, it's a dead-end street and relatively narrow, if you opened it all the way through to Hill Station Road, will not be happy with the increased volume of traffic. So, you're going from a dead-end street to a through street.
Right.
There's also this, our differences in cost.
But I think for us, we need to know this.
You have to make Hillside meet, you know, town highway standards, and so you'd have to widen the entirety of the street. You'd have to put in storm drains, you'd have to take away some people's private landscaping, and you'd have a lot of curb cuts. There's a lot of curb cuts on that street.
Right, associated costs.
So, option two, because there are no curb cuts, may have some advantages, and nobody who fronts on option two, that's a...
Right. So, that would not go through Town Law 200.
But people do front on that road. I mean, let's be, you know...
Backyard side.
Right. So, I've spoken with Kathleen Murray about that, so we'd need to, you know, there was some concern that, you know, people here might object. I mean, certainly less than here, but this was a smarter option to me, this option two, than up here.
They back onto it, though. So, there's a couple...
Yeah, but you do have the opportunity to have three neighbors who may, you know, complain, so I'm just alert.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Their access is on Hillside, but, right, they'll certainly know what's going on behind them and see what, you know, has been proposed. The other part with option one, of course, is that if we wanted this to connect through, the town would be responsible for improving the part that's marked in red. That's, you know, there are no...
With option one or option two?
I'm sorry, option one. We'd have to improve that portion of the road on option one.
And then the residents of Hillside would have to pay to improve the rest of the...
Under the current Town Law 200 system, that's what they would still be required to do. I have very, you know, broad estimates for the cost of those improvements that were done a couple of years ago. Option two, as we said, is really, would fall pretty much entirely upon the town. We've looked, you know, again, in very broad terms at the cost of doing that. I think that road is owned by a...
Defunct corporation. Do you want to talk to that company?
It's shown on the subdivision maps. Under Town Law 279, if a road is shown on a subdivision map, then the town can take it into the system unless there's a note on the survey that says that they cannot take it into the system. Those subdivision maps, none of them have a note for either road saying that it cannot be taken in. So, they are shown on the subdivision map, so under Town Law 279, we could conceivably take them in. The roads, when you click on them, are owned presumably by the Shinnacock Hills Development Corp., which was the developer that built these subdivisions. They're, it's no longer in existence. They're no longer an active corporation. We did some research a few years ago, and we weren't able to find any corporation that still, you know, exists or takes ownership of it.
But the taxes are being paid for that. I think you and I had spoken, and I didn't have the answer that...
Zero.
It's in a separate tax law.
Because I was trying to find out where this company was and paid from. I have some experience with similar situations with these old paper roads, the kind of unknown ownership, and typically you can move forward, you know, you do kind of like a friendly condemnation if nobody comes out of the woodwork.
Right. It was atypical that I was worried about because I had a name on it, and I just wanted to make sure this company didn't exist and suddenly appear in the middle of...
And then it transfers clearly, you know, you want to get the title clearly into town ownership if we're gonna do that, but it's not a hard nor expensive process because there's nobody who's going to contest it. And if there are, then we'll know who owns it.
We'll find out. That's what I was talking about. I want to be sure that, you know, that they don't suddenly show up.
This is not an unusual circumstance. This happens quite a bit in municipal government where you have these old paper roads that...
I understand that, but I also understand that it's not a hard, fast rule, and I wanted to be sure that, you know, this doesn't get sabotaged by one person who suddenly shows up.
I think we'd also have to reach out to the MTA Long Island Railroad that this borders there right-of-way. So, again, I'm not sure there'd be any issue there, but they border a significant portion of the road, so we'd certainly have to make sure they knew that these improvements were going forward. We'd stay out of there right-of-way, but any time you do work along the right-of-way, you do have to be very cautious in working with the railroad about safety and protection of, you know, their ability to operate, so.
Tom, I know under the Transportation Commission, there's an unimproved road plan in Southampton Town. Has its right-of-way or any of these right-of-ways come up on that plan? Are they...
You know, Hillside is ranked on the rough rankings that we did. The Shinnacock Hills Road Extension, because it's not really, it doesn't really fall into the Town Law 200 criteria because, again, there are no property owners fronting on it.
Well, it doesn't exist right now as a private road.
Right, doesn't, right, doesn't exist. It's just a paper road, so that's not on the list, if you will.
Because it's not a road at all?
Because it's not a road.
But we do have hundreds of unimproved roads in the town?
Right, right.
Okay.
Last count, somewhere around four.
Type 962, right, the grid highway, and it's already designated, option two, as it's listed as a highway, roads set aside, right?
So, you know, I... So, you know, I...
Paper road.
One of the things we've learned is there's an awful lot of different legal distinctions depending on which road or paper road you look at.
Yeah, and that's why I was, you know, I wanted to do that, get that information in front of...
So, and I, you know, we did invite Alex Freiger here today, I see he's not here, our highway superintendent, but the idea behind either option, but the particular option two would be to create a new road, that's a one-way, just a one-direction, heading toward Hill Station Road, as a way for these folks to be able to exit their community more safely than currently. And then you come to the question, if that's the best option, how is it paid for? Is it something that only the residents pay for? Or as a public safety issue, is it something that is borne as a town-wide expense?
I would just like to interject with option two. In one of the discussions Elaine and I have had over the last couple of years was, I floated the possibility of, since there's 90 homeowners up there, would the option of perhaps creating a special improvement district, you know, to fund the improvement of that road? Elaine did not seem to feel the homeowners would be receptive to that.
Can I ask, though, if, let's say it wasn't a town road, what if we were able to get the street and give it to a homeowners' association? Couldn't they just put a dirt road in and keep it private? And say, here's our way out, and it's private dirt road, one direction, or private road, and then we just mark it private road? You see roads like that all the time. Private road, no access.
And that gives you control over it, so it doesn't have a racetrack for people trying to find a...
It wouldn't be that expensive to just cut the trees down and put a dirt road in. It gets expensive when you start putting in curves and asphalt. I think these people just want a safe way to exit their neighborhood.
With that option, would the neighbors be responsible for the maintenance going forward because potholes and dirt roads go together?
Yeah, well, they maintain their other private roads, right?
Yeah, I mean, they're certainly illegal.
You guys have a homeowners' association?
No.
You could form one.
We could form one.
And we could hand you the road. Basically, we condemn it, take it, and then donate it to the homeowners' association, and you guys use it as you please and keep it a private road for your purposes.
I don't know the legalities of that, I'd have to look into it. I'm only familiar with Town Law 279, which allows the town to take it into the highway system.
Right. Well, but we may run aground a little bit if the highway superintendent would have to accept it into the highway system.
Yeah.
It would have to be improved to highways, town standards.
Can the town do it on its own initiative?
Yeah, the statute actually says that until such time as it's been accepted by resolution of the local legislative body. Obviously, you would like the support of the highway superintendent in doing so.
Well, he was invited to this meeting, correct?
He is reviewing it, he's looking into it.
You know, and that...
I think he has maybe some concerns I heard through the grapevine about because there's a railroad underpass there and maybe the visibility...
That is one of the concerns. I have some pictures, which I'd be glad to share. One of the things is this goes forward that we really would have to consider is the proximity to the railroad underpass. The line of sight there is not, is not great, and I think that would, and we have had problems at other, at a couple of other locations in the town. I don't know if, I don't think they gave you copies of these, let me give you...
There's a number of ways we can approach this issue. One is a town-wide expense, one as a donation to the, a homeowners' association would have to be formed, and then they could put in a private road. And then, I guess, Town Law 200 would be the third option. I guess the fourth option is to do nothing.
So this is that...
I think that's going to be a great option for the residents.
I have a couple more, sorry, just to...
Tom, where does this come out? Is this before or after?
Maybe it's in the packet you already got? Did I staple it? Oh, okay. Then, I'm sorry, it's the, I didn't know if I'd stapled that in there or not. Keep going, you only have two, okay.
If they go the route of the private road, they could also take care of that one section of St. Andrews, too, if they had a homeowners' association that could maintain a kind of a dirt road interconnect from St. Andrews to, what is it, Shinnecock, Shinnecock Hills Road? So that, you said there might be a little bit of an issue there, but it's passable. That's one possibility.
Right. You know, so I think there are, as you see from the picture, that, you know, there is, would be a concern with the proximity of the overpass there, have to be considered when you looked at it.
Okay, I'm a little confused, where am I looking at?
In the photo you have, that is just the southern, take that all the way to the far end, that's right where the railroad trestle is. That's where I've circled there, where it's kind of the bright area in the picture, just north of the railroad trestle is where Shinnecock Hills Extension would...
Oh, I see, here, right here.
That's where Shinnecock Hills, this side of the road.
Oh, no.
Because I don't see a road on the other side.
Come out.
What am I missing?
Over here.
Looks like this goes through under the tracks.
So this is south, okay.
Under the silver pass, I mean. So is that, is that this?
No, it's right, just north, this shows right, we're standing right about where it would exit, just north of the tracks, that's where that picture is. That bright area in the picture is pretty much where Shinnecock Hills.
But when you're coming out, you're actually looking south.
You're looking south. The railroad trestle would be to your south.
Thank you, Tom.
Right, so the line of sight with a vehicle coming north and a vehicle coming out of Shinnecock Hills Road Extension is a concern. And you have to do final surveys and...
So this would be, maybe it could be over there. Come out there, and that's what we're looking at.
So that real bright area in the picture is roughly where the road would come out, and you'd be looking south, northbound traffic would be coming up at you, and the line of sight there may be an issue.
Right, we might have to put some signage on Hill Station Road, you know, indicating to drivers that there is a freeway ahead or, you know, private road.
That's where we need a, you know, engineer, you know, we had done through the engineering department very rough cost estimates for these kind of improvements, but to really get good numbers, an engineering firm would have to be hired to provide the good numbers. And one of the issues they should also look at as the survey was done is that line of sight at that exit area there.
Kathleen, if we went the route of a private road, so basically, they're doing it with it as they please, they can cut it, they can cut the road when they want, do they have to, is there a permitting process? Obviously, to cut down trees, you would need some kind of permission, right?
You'd certainly probably need a road opening permit from the highway department, but I can't speak to that at this time.
On a private road?
Because Town Law only speaks to taking it into the highway system, it doesn't speak to, you know, keeping it private.
I don't think I've ever been involved where a town was to transfer any interest they may have to a homeowners' association, like what you mentioned. Could be a solution, but I haven't been involved in that.
So they would own the paper road, and then they'd go to open that paper road as a dirt road, not as a town road?
Right.
Maybe they put some gravel down on it, whatever.
I would think, yeah.
Would they need a permit to...
Highway review, I would suspect that...
I don't know about highway department, maybe they have to go through a con board, conservation board or something? I don't, I don't know.
And also...
Having a curb cut onto Hill Station or some type of access way into Hill Station would...
Some of the dirt road, yeah.
As we found with...
You have to do some more research on that.
As we found with private roads that want to come into the town road system, you know, we're not able to regulate those roads. So, you know, one ways or do-not-enters or speed limits are not things that would be regulated by the town.
But if there was a private road, you could keep it to a single lane, which would guarantee that it's one-way.
Right, or just basically keep it as a private road.
You mean, I'm sorry, is it a town road or is it a private road?
It's a private road. As a town road, if you made it a single lane, do we have a single lane?
You know, a number of years ago, there were issues up in Shinnecock Hills with Canoe Place Road, the portion that is the trustee road that runs through Canoe Place Road, of people using that, even though it's rocky and bumpy and, you know, hard. And Hillside also, one of the reasons there's now a metal barrier at the Hill Station road end is that people would drive up over the dirt rock portion to use it as a shortcut, so...
But can we, I mean, that was my concern when I heard this, because I support the idea, I understand what the neighbors want.
It becomes like a driveway, common driveway.
But can, can we control its directionality if you make it a...
If it's a town road, we can enact a law, if it's a private road...
Could that be challenged if people want to gain access going the other way at some point in future?
If it's a private road, you have no jurisdiction over it.
No, no, no.
But a private road, they could make it go both ways, but to say, you know, private road, and they could put a gate up with a key or whatever, or electronic thing that opens up.
That can be done, but as far as, you know...
It could be activated.
People can drive the wrong way on a narrow road or, you know, they wouldn't have a little ban if it was posted.
So I feel like we're talking about this, and I have, you guys, what are you...
You know, it was, by the way, they used to be a dirt road, not that, you know, a few years ago, there was a dirt road off of Hill Station Road that went, I think, to Hill...
We used it.
The Hillside.
The new owner closed it up.
I used to get calls in the hard days of County Road 39, when it was a single lane, somebody on that road used to call me and said, 400 cars went down my dirt road today.
Really?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that was, you know, my reference to Canoe Place Road and the Hillside, the way that was dealt with was that the highway superintendent put up a metal barricade at Hill Station so that cars wouldn't cut through there.
How long is this? This is like, I'm thinking of the snowplow bill.
Yes, exactly.
Do I have some line?
That's another issue.
I don't remember exactly what the, what the justice on...
Who's going to plow? If it's a private road, it's up to them.
We definitely need a way.
Yeah, but this is a long private road.
They would have to, you know, that's why I think you would need the mechanism of a homeowners' association, and everybody pays a little bit of dues, and it pays to maintain that access.
If you've gotten your driveway snowplowed lately, I don't, this is a mile, at least?
Yeah.
There's a key on the bottom, I can't read it.
Yeah, I can't really...
You know, I think that the dues would be nominal, somebody would have to...
I remember, I remember it was like a half a mile or something.
About a half a mile, that's what it was like.
I think everybody shares this issue of not being able to, you know, to enter their, is it exit? Exit, right, exit their community safely. So I think that they would, I personally think they would all chip in.
I don't know.
Depends on what the cost is.
I think everyone feels that the town needs to do something for us, provide, and I'm not sure if the board is aware, you know, there's three major businesses that their entrance and exit is on Greenfield Road. Hardy Plumbing has 50 trucks.
Yeah.
The gas station people use, and the low field, I mean...
Yeah, no, I wasn't aware of that.
Oh, wait, there's three major businesses that their entrance and exit is on our road, Greenfield. And Hardy's Improving keeps adding, and the boatyard, and we're stuck, we're stuck.
They're at the 100 or 200 feet closest to 39.
Well, I mean, we could look at the numbers for doing, I mean, I still like the alternative, what is it, the lower one, the Shinnecock?
Option two.
I still like option two more than option one, but we could look at what it would cost, because we would have to do it to town highway standards. And, you know, so we'd have to put in a paved road and...
Drainage.
Some drainage. It could be one-way, it could be a one-way street, so it wouldn't have the same width. I don't know that it needs shoulders, but...
That's my question, I hope you can do that.
Our ballpark estimates were between a half a million and $900,000 to improve that road to town standards.
As a one-way street?
Then, no, it was to 26 feet, one-way or country lane standard of 20 feet, can't be less.
Yeah, but now, make it a one-way street, it's got to cut it down significantly.
But that's why we really need to have...
That's legal, can we do that?
One-way streets are legal, sure.
We have some one-way streets in the town, not many, I don't know that we've ever, I mean, I've been here 15 years, we've never built a town road since I've been here, so this is pretty unique to everybody.
No reason why you couldn't build a one-way road.
I don't know, that's why I'm asking the question.
Vehicle and traffic law 1660 allows you to designate a one-way.
A one-way.
Or can create a one-way.
Designate, but do you have to build it at two-way standard?
That's your chapter 312 improvements that you often see and that you have before you that Tom presents, those are all under VCL 1660. So it gives the local municipal...
I would say rework those numbers, you have no curb cuts, no utilities, I don't understand why it would be that much.
I think the, I think this is where a professional engineering firm would have to, you know, be hired to spec it out, provide us with tight numbers. As I said, that range I'm giving...
Those numbers, the number you gave me, that's like kind of the standard number for like a mile of road, it doesn't sound right.
You know, our assistant town engineer, you know, is no longer with us, but when he, he's the one that would always estimate the Town Law 200 roads was his job.
I'd like to see it estimated as a one-way road. One-way road, maybe some passage for if you had an emergency vehicle, how to go in the other direction, you know, if somebody could pull over to the side, but...
If this was made a one-way road, would emergency vehicles, fire, ambulance be able to access this neighborhood from Hill Station Road?
Well, you know, we've talked about, if it's a one-way road, you know, making, again, ambulance and fire, you could probably somehow work it out that they could use those. We've also talked about this as an emergency access road when there is a problem on 39. You know, so there are some options there.
Yeah, these people who live here, when is it, like, the other day there was that accident, they couldn't, nobody could go home. It happened a lot.
But that's my point, you have that, you have no turnout for, if you make this, if you make this a single lane, now you have no turnout, and you have to have the ability to pass if you have emergency situations, do that. That's why I asked under the law for highways, whether you can designate it one-way, but you still have to have cross-traffic access, you know, in order to safeguard against, for public safety issues, emergencies, et cetera, et cetera. That's what the question I was...
Grass shoulder, I mean, country road kind of thing, grass shoulder and...
I think 18 feet is the standard that we use for driveways, with commercial driveways. 20 feet is the minimum in the town, currently in the town highway standards is 20 feet, which we consider a country lane. That is two-way, it's a narrow two-way, but it, you know...
But it's so that you can get, yeah.
So that you can get to, we've never, again, I'm not aware that we've ever actually built a road to one-way standards, we really have to look into that.
Can we get a price for a one-way country lane?
Well, I think this is where we have to hire an engineering firm to give us the price.
Understood.
You know, we can do that in house.
Understood.
And there's the legal aspect of creating a one-way road, and then kind of the practical aspect of creating a one-way road. But as you said, vehicles going in the contra-direction, we may have emergency vehicles that want to go contra the one-way, they could probably do it with lights and sirens, but for example, in the case of what happened the other day, if we made it one-way westbound, then residents of that area aren't going to be able to go eastbound.
And my concern is because it is, you know, close, a little over half a mile long, that that's a big, that's a problem. You can't turn around.
So unless you opposed a police officer at each end and you kind of temporarily waive it, I mean, those are some of the practical issues.
And is that something that could happen? God forbid, there's a situation on Route 39, emergency vehicles come in and they say, okay, we now want to use this road the opposite way, we are going to detour all of 39 through this neighborhood to get around a situation that could happen, right?
Right, that's another possibility of...
Obviously, you folks have been on this for a while, you know, I got this 72 hours ago or less.
Oh, okay.
And so I'm considering it.
Sure.
And I understand your situation, I just want to fully vet everything at this stage.
Yeah, I think this idea of fire lanes is something that I've been thinking about for quite some time, because we've had so many situations where we've had accidents on County Road 39 that basically have shut down the entire area, right? No one can get to work, no one, you know, and that there has to be some way for the police, emergency vehicles to be able to detour traffic in those circumstances. And I think everybody in this neighborhood, though they may be inconvenienced if there's, let's say, a fatality along County Road 39 that shuts down the road, they'll live with it, they'll understand that, okay, during those events, you know, we have to do what we have to do to route traffic through. So, you know, I think it would be helpful, in a lot of levels, to have a fire lane or some sort, maybe we should call it a fire lane, but something like this that would allow at least emergency vehicles to be able to go from Hill Station Road down County Road 39, at least to that exit point where, what is it, St. Andrews?
St. Andrews West.
St. Andrews West comes out. That's a big stretch of road, and it's been closed too many times, unfortunately.
I mean, they usually use Hill Station to Montauk Highway as that, you know, as a diversion to any kind of accidents there, so, I mean, that, that road exists already, so, I mean, to, to put, to use our, the road that we're planning on, or that we'd like, I guess that would be an alternate, but I don't know if our, our neighborhood could handle that traffic.
Which, what traffic?
I mean, like, an emergency traffic situation.
As we've talked...
It wouldn't be very often.
I was going to say, right.
Because there was a fatality or something of, you know, a serious accident that has, and, and it would be really a public emergency.
I agree, that should be thought of, definitely, should be wide enough, just in case.
You know, wouldn't, hopefully, you know, it's not, wouldn't happen very often, but we would expect everybody to do their part, you know, to help us in an emergency.
And it did happen when we had that paper road, the dirt road, they have used that.
And so right now, we don't have an option.
Right.
And it's, it's not just, you know, you guys that are impacted, we have a lot of people, I mean, somebody called me the other day when that section was, was closed down, and there was tremendous traffic, and they didn't have very good air conditioning, and an elderly couple said, "Can we come over to your house?" We, you know, where, you know, they, they were overheating. I said, "Of course, come over," and they, they stayed at my house for an hour while the traffic dissipated. So, you know, this affects a lot of people when you do have a shutdown on 39.
Yeah, we could not do...
And that was a forty-five minute shutdown.
I know.
We've had it shut down for four hours.
Oh, I know.
I remember that, yeah.
I sat in it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the phones ringing off the hook when that happened, so, you know, if there's ways of getting some people through, even, just, even if it's for getting emergency, the police car to get through.
Right.
Or an ambulance to get through, because they can't get through the traffic either, or the medical examiner to get through, because they need to get there to make the death pronouncement, you know, it, it would be helpful to have an access point like this. So, just figuring out really what is the best way to do it. And I, I think if we could engage the services of an engineer, so we at least would know what it would cost if it were a town road, a one-way country lane, and then we can also look at the option of the homeowners' association, and, and what the likely dues would be, if it's nominal, it might help to have a homeowners' association, then you can speak with one voice, and, you know, there might be other things you guys do as a neighborhood. A lot of homeowners' associations get together, or, you know, have summer barbecues and do things, so, it's a, it's a good way, basically, to take a hundred residents that have a common issue, and speak as one voice. So, there might be landscaping and things like that, that, you know, you might be able to assist us if there's a park in the community, in the neighborhood, if they, the land that we own, to help maintain it.
So we need some, a lot of, we need some conversations here to get answers to. I mean, I support the, the concept, but there's more, less than I know than, than more here.
Litter pickup in a neighborhood, community like...
We do that, yeah.
Neighborhood watches, you know, there's all kinds of things a, a homeowners' association can do that are positive, just a thought. So, I, I mean, I'm willing to look at it from the town's perspective, then we have to figure out who pays for it, and how we pay for it.
And maintain it.
And maintain it.
You know, I'm very curious as to, you know, where the highway superintendent is on this.
Yeah, me too.
I'm sure that, that you've had conversations with him, considering the, the life.
But we just need relief, you know, I have the petition here, eighty percent of the residents are for it, we need to get out safely, in and out, that's our only concern. I mean, we have suffered dearly in this neighborhood. And I've wa, I'm here over twenty years, and I've watched it from the two-lane road, where you could get in and out, to now it's impossible.
No, I know, there's a lot of people with driveways on County Road 39, they, they have no choice, they'll, will never be able to develop a choice, possibly, for some of those properties. At least, where there are, is the possibility of a solution for you, which is good. Yeah, County Road 39 is, it's dangerous.
It's not only difficult for us to exit, it's also very difficult to enter, coming from going west, coming into our street, in that turning lane, it's just...
Well, if it's, it becomes a one-way street, that won't help you with that.
That won't change it, that won't change.
No, but at least we can go to Montauk Highway, take a right on Hill Station, come into our neighborhood if we want to.
Oh, you, oh, currently?
Yeah.
To, to make a right into your neighborhood.
If we were going west from Southampton, let's say, and making a left into our neighborhood in the turning lane, into Greenfield, that is such a dangerous...
Especially in the morning.
Right, but, but you're proposing...
You're saying you could use Montauk Highway and come up Hill Station.
It's Montauk Highway from Southampton, and come around.
Except that, except that, you're talking about making a one-way road.
That's not going to change that.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Right. So that wouldn't...
Wrong way.
That wouldn't help. Yeah, wrong way.
But what you can do, if that's a concern...
But that's another concern.
But if that is your concern, you can go up Hill Station and make the right.
The right on 39.
Right, right.
On, on Greenfield.
Would that be problematic if you made it two-way?
Definitely do not want a two-way street there.
No, 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 we don't.
You may want to enter your neighborhood.
No, we don't.
I, I do think, and I could be wrong, but if, if you just, in the situation you described, where you're, you're heading west, and you're trying to...
I mean, ideally, we would like a light.
Forget it.
That's not going to happen.
It wouldn't want to happen.
That's what I was trying to point out.
But, but I think, in the situation you're in, that you just described, so you're heading west on Montauk Highway, or County Road 39, and you want to make the left onto Greenfield, I think the visibility is better for that turn than it is coming out of Greenfield and trying to make the left.
Yeah, but the traffic is, it's like, you'll, you'll be there for a while.
Oh, you get, you might be there for a while.
Yeah, we're there sometimes in the morning, a long time.
You'll be there forever.
It'll be a little safer, but the wait, the only shot you'll have is, I guess, when, whatever, what's the, what's the light, is there a light?
No.
No, that's it, there's no light.
Now, coming in in the morning from SYS at eight AM to get into our neighborhood, it's two-lane, a bumper-to-bumper traffic coming, going east, we can't get in.
All right, because there's no light at, what's it, Shrubland?
Yeah, we can't get in.
Well, there, there are a lot more answers than the question.
Yeah, there's no light at Shrubland.
A light, a light would be the cheapest thing, but...
But the county, the Tuckahoe gives us a break if we want to go west sometimes, you know, that, that light's good.
Right, but the, you can't, right, there's no light at Shrubland.
No, we have no break.
Okay, so we need some, the answers to those basic questions.
Getting some engineering, right.
Yeah.
So what's, what's the pleasure of the board? And you want to let Tom talk to our engineer? Who is that, do we have a in-house, somebody, McLean, or?
I mean, we use McLean for a lot of work, I think the highway superintendent has them on a consulting contract, you know, any reputable firm could do it.
And that's part of the issue, too, if, you know, if you have support from the highway superintendent to make it a town road, that's one thing, if you don't, that's another thing, the private road issue.
Private road, you don't have to deal with...
A bunch of whole, yeah, exactly, that's the point.
But, but do we want to go spend, let's say it costs, whatever, ten thousand dollars, hypothetically, to, to engineer, to do this analysis, and figure out what it's going to cost?
Right.
Actually, probably figuring out what it's going to cost won't cost us very much.
Right.
But why spend the money if at the end of it, you know that the highway superintendent will never approve?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
My understanding is, he's considering it, he's reviewing the idea, I would suggest that, you know, we reach out again, and, and, you know, I think the best solution would be to go through his office.
Do you want to do that? You want to bring it, tell them that, is the town board willing to look at this, and in which case we'll dispatch Tom to talk to Alex and say the town board is interested in seeing what it would cost, and, but didn't want to spend for any money on engineering unless he had, you know, if we had some confidence that he might take it into the highway system at the end of the process.
Well, I, I support the idea, I just don't want to spend a whole lot of money, as you say, that's going to end up being, you know, I think you have to get some of these questions answered upfront before we can make an informed decision as a board.
Why can't we estimate the cost of that's one-way country lane?
But what's it going to cost?
Can Christine Fenton...
I mean, we could ask, you know, Christine to do it, she certainly...
Just do it entirely.
...know a very, very competent engineer, but she's not a road builder.
Right, and you guys need a...
A rough idea of what that...
We'd probably need somebody that, you know, does road work, you know, a lot. I can speak to Christine about it to see if she's comfortable with...
One-way country lane, or what is it, half a mile?
My perspective on that, and I think, you know, we have to go back and forth, is I would certainly make it enough that it can be, that two vehicles can pass.
Yeah, I think you need to have the two, even if it's one-way, to have it wide enough for two vehicles.
Right. I mean, to me, a twenty-foot would be the minimum width, but, so that, that could, in an emergency, get passed.
So that's basically a tenth of a mile, right?
No, it's point one-three.
All right, so, but right there maybe is a tenth.
So, three sections, that's a...
Yeah, it's like three...
Maybe we'll try reaching out to the highway superintendent again after he's had a little time to think about it.
A third of a mile.
It, it's actually more, because he didn't add the point three, but it's closer, it's closer to half a mile.
No, I didn't take the full length, did I?
Okay.
I, I cut it down by a section, so it's about a, I think about a third of a mile. We'll, we'll measure it.
Right, and then another thing will be, ask the engineer to look at that, look at that, look at that line of sight at that choice.
I know.
We can work on that, too. Okay, why don't we go back and regroup on how we get an estimate, have an engineer take a look at it for us.
I'll give my road, my road measure, and I'll walk down.
Thank you.
All right.
Good, thank you.
Thank you so much for...
We, we certainly understand your predic...
Christine, any comments?
Okay, I have a thing.
Okay, let's, let's switch to some updates, if you guys, you don't have to stick around.
Thanks, Jack.
You're welcome, if you want, I'll, I'll make sure Sunday gets a copy, and we'll stamp yours as copies, because I know that can occasionally be...
I don't know, I keep looking at you, Christine, and thinking, I, I, I want this, I, I...
Well, what?
What, you're...
You want to sit here and look at the...
Don't you have enough crutches? You have enough crutches.
I got sunglasses.
You have enough crutches, you don't need more.
All right, all right, so we're going to move on to some updates. So, First Hampton Bay's water, the filtration system is up and running, I think two of the three wells at Wellfield Number One are in operation. We, we have, they were put online on Saturday, and, you know, it's, it's certainly helping, we had the tests that were done, actually, through the good graces of Suffolk County Water Authority, they kind of stepped up because we were held up because the lab that the contractor was using to test the water is so backed up that it's weeks before we would have had data. Suffolk County Water Authority have their own lab, they, they tested the water, the results were accepted by Suffolk County Health Department, New York State Health Department, and two of the wells were put into service. The third well, I think, is still waiting on parts, either for the blowout or for the pump, that was, they had to get a new pump for that one. So the, as far as I know, that not only is, has eliminated the PF O A, PF O S issue, but also the pressure issues that were, that was dislodging a lot of sediment into the water system in certain areas, they were having this brownish water. I haven't heard since then that, you know, that there are any reports of brown water, so hopefully it has solved that problem. They are still continuing with the irrigation schedule, the odd houses on odd days, even houses on even days. I think they're going to stop that when that third well comes on, as I understand it. There were some additional water tests that were sent up to New York State Board of Health, we don't have those results yet, but that would be a second set on top of the results that we already have. Any questions on Hampton Bay's water issues? The old Howard Johnson's Diner, Riverboat Diner, I think it was called, at one point, so that is gone now, it's been demolished along the Riverside Circle, that is part of that redevelopment of that area, I think it's becoming some offices and some apartments, it's going...
Medical.
Medical offices, so it's going to be a brand-new building, I saw some renderings, it looks beautiful. It's nice to see things are happening there, the traffic circle is coming along, too, really well now, it's really, you know, it's functioning as a traffic circle now, there's still quite a bit of paving work to be done, but it's, I think it's going to be very successful. Code enforcement has been very active, I had made a complaint about all these signs that were popping up seemingly everywhere, not the political signs, they kind of look like the political signs that you see out in October, but a lot of businesses were putting signs out, you know, for their services, and particularly, you know, all over, particularly in the stretch from Bridge Hampton to kind of where the Princess Diner was. So code enforcement, they, they pulled them all down, and they have, they, hundreds of these signs have been taken down, and then they have, I guess they're noticing the, with violations, some of the more egregious offenders. So, these companies are being notified and written up for tickets that are doing this. You can't do that, it violates our, a number of our codes, including littering, as well as illegal signs, so they are on that issue, and I, I'm sure if you drive around, you've noticed the difference. They also kind of did a bit of a sweep on illegal apartment rentals or home rentals, those that have been advertised, those are being advertised that don't have rental permits, you may have seen something from code enforcement regarding that, largely in the Bridge Hampton area as well. The, as you know, we, the opioid task force finished, finished its charge, which would deliver the recommendations to the town board, we have now set up a new committee for implementation called the Addiction and Recovery Committee, they had their first meeting last week, two members of the office, the State Office of Substance Abuse Services came from the Brentwood Long Island Regional Office, they were at the meeting, as well as two members from the Albany office were involved in a conference call. The two members from the State Office in Albany are planning to visit Southampton in September to discuss more ideas of how to implement some of the recommendations made in the task force, task force draft report. One of the things they're looking at is setting up a space, like a clubhouse, something like Thrive, but on a smaller scale, that could help young people who are in recovery socialize without having to be exposed to alcohol, or, you know, you know, in a kind of a healthy, healing environment, and maybe learn some skills to get their lives back on track. Good Ground Park, this concert again tonight, weather permitting, Nancy Atlas, who puts on a great show, if you've never seen Nancy Atlas, she's a, a local person who's gained a lot of attention for her, as a musician and singer and songwriter, she's playing tonight at seven PM at Good Ground Park, unless it rains, which then it gets moved to Monday. And we've seen a lot of people coming to these concerts, five hundred people attended the last concert, which was an Earthwind Fire Tribute Band.